This plan indicates the capacity improvements needed on the regional roadway networks within the next following 10 years to accommodate future development and the cost of which is the basis of the impact fee. The capacity improvements such as new and widened roadways, as well as intersection or ramp improvements, are listed in the Region Road Impact Fee Capital Improvements Plan. Provisions in NRS 278 require that the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee of each local jurisdiction to review the land use assumptions and determine whether they are in conformance with the master plan of the local government, review the Capital Improvements Plan, and file comments to the city councils reporting any perceived inequities in the implementation of the Capital Improvements Plan or the imposition of the impact fee. Per NRS 278B, the Reno City Council may establish the Planning Commission as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. In January of 2009, the City Council passed resolution doing just that. So that's why the Planning Commission is serving as our Capital Improvements Advisory Committee tonight. In accordance with the provisions of the interlocal cooperative agreement that was entered into by RTC, Washoe County, and the cities of Reno and Sparks, RTC is responsible for initiating periodic reviews of the Regional Road Impact Fee program and proposing modifications to participating governments. The review process is undertaken by the RTC in conjunction with the Regional Road Impact Fee Technical Advisory Committee, or RIFTAC, as we call it. The RIFTAC includes local government, technical experts, development representatives from the private sector, members of local planning commissions, and the RTC. In August of 2011, the RTC Board directed staff to retain Tishler Bice to perform an overview of the RIF program and make recommendations for improvements in order to meet state law impact fee requirements, national case law standards, and current best professional practices. Over the next three years, the RTC, the RIFTAC, and Tishler Bice have worked together to develop the proposed revisions to the RIF General Administration Manual and the Capital Improvements Plan that were presented to and approved by the RTC Board on September 19th of 2014. Tonight, we are asking the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee for a recommendation of approval of the Regional Road Capital Improvements Plan to City Council and provide comments reporting any perceived inequities in the implementation of the Capital Improvements Plan or the imposition of an impact fee. And with that, I will turn to Julie Masterpool of the RTC, RTC Senior Engineer, and the RIF Administrator for RTC to present the details of the Capital Improvements Plan and overview of the changes to the RIF program.
As Bill mentioned, I'm Julie Masterpool with the RTC, here today to present the fifth edition of the Regional Road Impact Fee program. As Bill mentioned, what our impact fees are, it's just a way to collect the cost of building capacity improvements that's attributable to new development. And it replaces the previous exaction methods where one developer might be conditioned to build an improvement, the guy next door got away with not having to build anything. So this way, everyone pays their fair share. There were two Supreme Court decisions that really kind of set up impact fees. They've been around since the '70s. And basically, they needed to make sure that there was a connection between the governmental action and also what the benefit that the development was going to receive. Also, that there was a fair share formula that was always used in impact fees, just to make sure that everybody was being treated equally. So, impact fee elements, the first three bullet points basically refer to those Supreme Court decisions. Also, revenues can only be used that are collected through the impact fee program, only used for capacity improvements, not for maintenance, not for operations, not for anything else, only for capacity improvements in our case, the regional road network. And that these revenues have to be spent within a designated timeframe. This is kind of just a flow chart that shows how we show that there is a reasonable proportional relationship between the growth and the new development and the fees themselves, the cost of those fees that we're charging new development. And I'll kind of go through here in the next couple of slides how these are all put together. Also, with our impact fee program, well, obviously, new development or the fees that are collected from development are used by RTC, those cash collections, to build capacity improvements on the regional road network. In addition, developers can choose to build those road improvements many time in conjunction with their projects, and in return, they receive impact fee credits or offsets to their impact fees that they would owe. So basically, they're paying forward, they're paying it ahead. Since 1996, we've seen about $276 million of capacity improvements that have been built throughout Washoe County through the impact fee program. A good portion of it has been through our development community, building those regional roads in association with their projects. As Bill mentioned, we hired Tishler Bice, and they're a nationally recognized impact fee consultant. To take a look at our existing program, we'd had it for about 18 years. We figured that there had been some changes in the national way the impact fees are run, and so they gave us some recommendations, worked with the RIF Technical Advisory Committee, and came up with our fifth edition, the recommendations. And here are some of the major changes that we've included. The first one is that the existing program we had had one service area where one fee was calculated. However, we had three separate benefit districts where the fees were collected and spent within those separate benefit districts. With the new program, we divided that into two separate service areas, and mainly that is because NRS made some changes since the beginning of this program that restricted an entire city from being within one service area. So we had to break up Reno and Sparks from being all in the same service area. So we now have two service areas, north and south, and I-80 is kind of the boundary between the two. Because we have two service areas, we have to have two separate fee calculations with two separate capital improvement plans. One that just relates to those roads that are in the north benefit service area and the roads that are in the south service area. And then they've also made recommendations and are changing the credit program that where new development did those improvements and received credits. We are now changing that program, and they're going to be receiving waivers, which is basically the same thing. The difference is, as before, they were, a new developer could earn more credits than he could ever spend for paying impact fees within his development. That kind of caused, while we got a lot of roads out of that way, it caused a lot of excess credits in the open market. So we're going to change that so a developer can only earn as many credits as he could spend in his impact fees. And here's kind of an example of what we, the service areas. The three northwest, northeast, and south were the old benefit districts that we had. With the new program, we're combining the northwest and the northeast benefit district to make the north service area. And again, any of the fees that are collected in the specific service area, we're staying that service area for use for the capacity improvements for those roads. And this is the capital improvement plan for, in this case, the north service area. The projects were selected out of the RTP, the 2035 RTP. We had the different road improvements in different timeframes, and we took the first 10 years, which is the requirement for our capital improvement plan, and divided those projects up on whether they were in the north service area or the south service area, and then came up with RIF share. Not all of these projects are going to be built by impact fees. There's many projects that are going to be funded through federal, state, RTC 5 bonding, and so we had to determine what the RIF share of those projects were. So you can see there's a percentage ranging between 0 to 100% that we anticipate projects would be constructed with RIF fees. And like Pyramid and McCarran is a perfect example that all of that is going to be funded with federal money. We did the same for the south service area, again, breaking them up into the funding source. The last couple of projects down there with Plum Lane, Southeast Connector are all being funded outside of the impact fee program, hence that's 0%. So these dollar amounts for each service area are used as the basis for coming up with our impact fee for the regional road program. As I mentioned on that flow chart, one of the first things that we had to do was to figure out what the growth was predicted for the next 10 years. And we used the consensus forecast, using population and employment for the next 10 years. Since we were using the 2010 and the 2025 timeframe is what's actually in the consensus forecast, we prorated that to come up with a 10-year scenario between 2014 and 2024, and converted population to how many houses we anticipated to be built over the next 10 years, what kind of jobs were going to be built, and how much trip is going to be added by those particular new jobs onto our regional road network. And we came up with, in this case, the bottom right-hand corner there, 258,000 new vehicle miles traveled on the regional network over the next 10 years. We did the same thing with the south service area. And then that's how we come up with our new impact fee rates for specific land uses. Each land use is determined, the fee for each land use is determined by the number of trips that they generate, a typical single-family home. We adjust that for trips outside of the area, so there's a trip adjustment, a trip length factor adjustment. These trip lengths is only the trips that are on the regional network, not on the freeway, not on the local streets. And we come up with the number of vehicle miles traveled associated with each individual land use. And then the cost of that CIP is divided by the number of new VMTs that are over that next 10-year period, and that comes up with our dollar per VMT and the fees for the individual land use. And here's kind of an example, is the example of the new fee schedule that's being proposed with this fifth edition, comparing it to our current impact fees. For single-family homes, we're just about in the same place we were for the current fee. The number of VMTs are actually going down a little bit, and that's based on, we anticipate over the next 10 years, that the number of trips on the regional network are a little bit less than what we had predicted before when we were in the big growth period and we anticipated that we were going to be growing quite a lot. And so that did affect the impact fee a little bit. But as far as dollars goes, we're between just about where we are today, or it has been reduced in some cases. Now, I also mentioned that there was the credit program, that the developers can actually build improvements on the regional road network. This is the difference between the old program and the new. Again, the old program, a developer could earn more credits than he could actually use in spending for his impact fees. With the new program, he's going to be limited to, the most credits he could earn or waivers he could earn would be what he could spend in impact fees. They would be limited to his development of record. They won't be able to be sold on the open market to places outside of his development, and that the new waivers will not expire. The current credits expire at 10 years. Since we do have a lot of existing credits in the program, those rules will stay in place. At the September board meeting, the RTC Board did vote to have an amendment to this fifth edition that's going for approval, and we will be extending the lifespan of those credits by an additional 10 years, once it's approved by all the local agencies. The next steps for adoption is I'm attending all the planning commissions, and then also will be presenting to the city councils and to the county commission. We anticipate that we should be able to have a new impact fee program in place in the January, February timeframe of 2015. And I would be glad to answer any questions. I kind of ran through that quite fast, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, thank you. We actually need to do disclosures and public comment on this item, and then I think we probably will have some questions for you.
Okay.
So, does anybody have any disclosures?
Madam Chair, I do. Commissioner Taylor, for the record, as you know, RTC is a client of Atkins, who I'm employed by, but since this is not a project, I got advice from council just to disclose, and it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thanks. All right, and we'll open it up for public comment on this item? Would there anyone like to, is there anyone who would like to give public comment? Okay, all right. So questions and comments on this from the commission?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieske, I would just like to say thank you for the presentation. I thought it was very thorough, and I was waiting to see how RTC was going to handle banked credits, as they are referred to in the industry. And I think that it's handled in a very fierce way to all parties who are holding credits. So my compliments to all of those who worked on this.
It was definitely a lot of discussion between, we have four developers that are on our RIFTAC, and they gave a lot of inputs. It was-
That's being politically correct, I'm sure, with your statement. So, thank you.
Other questions? Yeah?
Commissioner Levis. I guess following on the credits, I'm just curious why, I don't know, politically correct or the whole volatility of the questions or the issues behind that, but is there a reason why the elimination of the credits versus for development?
Well, as far as, we are changing from the credit program to the waiver program. The credits are still out there, they can still be used as they are today, limited by the benefit district, which they were earned, but they can still be bought and sold on the open market and used outside of the development of record. At the time that was developed, it was a great idea, or we thought, and now looking back, we are very unusual in our credit program. All other impact fees do have something similar, but they usually are limited to that development of record, just so that we don't overbill too fast. I don't know if that answered your question.
I guess, not really. I'm just thinking that that's kind of, if the developers are building something and getting credits, then they're basically financing something that is wanted anyways, so why not give them a credit?
And they are still getting a credit, that the new waivers are replacing these credits, so they'll use those waivers to pay their impact fees. I think what the advantage here is that we'll be looking at the program a little bit closer when they come in for a request, and instead of building a six-lane road, maybe they really only need to build four lanes. And so they're going to be more in proportion to what they need to build for their development, rather than going too far forward. So it's going to keep the program in balance, I think, a little bit better.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Reno, looking at the attachment A, where it shows a change over 2014 to 2010, it looks like there's a decrease-
Yes.
-in almost everything across the board, you know, varying in percentage-wise. One question I had is, why was there an increase in the regional park of 3%, and if, maybe you can help explain that?
Let's see, I'm going to jump ahead. I think this is kind of a summary of maybe the screen that, or the attachment that you might be looking at. For the regional park, we did reassess all of these fees. We did actually reduce some of the land uses that we had previously. For the regional park, trying to think what, I think the difference there is maybe the trip lengths. There's, the three factors that go into the development of the fee is the number of trips that a particular land use uses, and these pass-by trips, and the trip length. And I think in this case, it might have been that the trip lengths might have been a little bit longer, because it's a regional park. I think before, we had county parks included, and so those were shorter trips.
Great, that answered that question. I was also wondering, I mean, this is a general slash across the board, and I know you're using different methodology to calculate, but has your need really gone away to where you don't need the monies for improvements for capacity?
Well, when you look at it from back when we did our last update with the capital improvement plan, we were in the big throes of still thinking that we-
You're just projecting way too, you overshot it.
We overshot it, exactly. And we saw about a 20% reduction in population and employment projections, so it's come down quite a bit, and that's really reflected in our impact fee. It's about a 20%, you know, in some cases, a little bit more, but it's around a 20% reduction in fees, and I think that's directly because of that projection in employment and population growth.
Okay. And looking at the capital improvement plans for the north and south areas, the first big-ticket items are ramps. Is this a long I-80? I mean, because it sounds like, if that's a line of demarcation, right, and you can split the impact fees from both sides to help pay for any improvements along that line?
Correct.
If that's what I read correctly, is that what's happening here? And do you know where these ramps are? I mean, I just kind of wonder why it's to be determined when it's such a big-ticket item.
That's something we've always tried to keep into the program, so we had, we were collecting the monies, because we know many of the ramps are deficient right now, as far as they're overcapacity. They haven't been completely identified at this point.
Okay.
So-
And when it's 50%, that means the feds are going to help out with the other 50?
Correct. Feds, or, you know, it could be state money, or, but most likely, it's going to be federal money included.
Okay, federal, okay. Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I have one question for you. Knowing that this is a way that we sort of measure and assess the impacts of development, this might be the elephant-in-the-room question, and knowing that we recently have a big new developer coming to our area, Tesla, though that's over the county line, were the impacts from that development, which I think we all know will be significant, on our roads and services accounted for in this? Was it sort of after the fact? Has anyone had that discussion?
I would say that it was, it's probably after the fact. When we were going through our calculations, we were using the 2013 consensus forecast. We do update our plan every two to three years, so we'll be able to catch up, you know, as we know more about what Tesla's going to, you know, their impact into our system. You know, they are outside of our impact fee service area, so they won't be charged an impact fee for Washoe County. However, anybody that lives here or that has a business here that grows will be paying an impact fee in that service. That answers.
Can I, so I guess maybe this is, this is a big question. They're not in our, because they're not in our county, they're not in the region that we're talking about, right?
Correct.
Has anyone discussed expanding those boundaries across county lines and working with Story County, knowing what the impacts will be on Washoe, and thinking about making an adjustment there, or having that conversation?
We probably can bring that up. I don't think we've had a lot of discussion at this point.
And part of the reason I'm bringing that up is because I know part of your charge here was to make sure that these were equitable, and so, you know, it's a developer who's going to have an impact in-
For the record, again, Bill Goll, I do know that at the last RTC board, there was direction to the RTC staff to look at the impacts of Tesla coming in. And I do know that service areas and MPOs, those come up on a fairly regular, you know, schedule, and they will take a look at that as development comes in outside the area, and whether the MPO boundaries need to be adjusted.
That's something that's done at RTC or at the Regional Planning or Governing Board?
Oh, I think we would probably start with it at the RTC and work with our RIF Technical Advisory Committee in coming up with some recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments before we take a motion on this?
Again, just-
Bill, sorry, go ahead.
Apology, just for clarification. We don't really need approval, this, what we need is exceptions to the report, and any comments provided, we'll forward those on to City Council. This item will go to City Council on the 22nd of October for their approval, so.
Okay, so do you need a motion to accept the report from us?
I think that would be fantastic.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion? Bice?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wieske, I move to file written comments to the City Council and report on any perceived inequalities in the implementation of the Capital Improvements Plan or the imposition of an impact fee.
Commissioner Kaufman, I'll second that.
Okay, any comments before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you so much. Next item on this agenda is public comment again. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment before we close this meeting? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Commissioner Kaufman.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ready? Okay, so adjourned. Hello again. Welcome to the Reno City Planning Commission meeting. Thanks for laughing. The Wednesday, October 1st Reno City Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Reno, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Next item on the agenda is roll call. Madam Secretary, will you take the roll, please?
Kevin Wieske.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Paul Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. This item is for general public comment or for public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form. We will also take public comment on the individual items as we hear them going forward. Is there any general public comment at this time?
Yes.
Okay, Peggy Pilmore? Hi?
I'm up there.
Yes, uh-huh, you have three minutes.
Thanks. So, my name is Peggy Pilmore, I live over at The Montage. I'm an owner and also a resident.
Can you pull the mic right down in front of you? There you go, perfect.
Thanks. Thanks. So, I mentioned, I live at The Montage, I'm an owner, and, as I just said, a resident. So, I was here approximately nine months ago, and this issue of noise came up. Supposedly, it was addressed, and specifically, I'm talking about West Second Street Bar and One Up. I have a loft that's directly across from the West Second Street Bar that I leased out. I had excellent tenants, and I lost them this month because of violations and considerations of West Second Street Bar. It was agreed upon that during the week, they would keep their windows closed after 10:00 PM, and weekends after midnight, which is very reasonable. Now, my residents, of course, my tenants left because of the noise violations. Unfortunately, I live in a different part of the building, and I didn't hear that, and they didn't tell me until it was too late, but they were great tenants for two years. So, I'm also hearing reports that One Up, the northwest side of the building, is concerned about noise- is concerned about noise violations again. So, we have, you know, just under 370 households that are living downtown. I'm sure that if any of you lived there, you would be all over this, but I'd like someone to get all over this again. We're starting a campaign calling Reno Direct and the non-emergency numbers, but it shouldn't come to that. It should just be as it was, with, you know, general consideration for your neighbors, and, you know, abiding by our agreements. So, if there's something you can do about that, I'd really like it done, and not only me, but everybody else that lives in the building. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, if you've got public comment, please come up to the podium. You can make your comment, and then you can give the orange sheet to the secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Peggy. She's from The Montage, but I'm a resident of The Riverwalk. And-
I'm sorry, can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Suzanne Dotton, again, a resident of The Riverwalk. And for, we're an older condo than The Montage, and for several years, we've had the same noise problem from the bars around us. So, beginning this year, with the help of Alex Woodley, with the help of code enforcement, with the help of the police, with all of the various condos kind of getting together, we were able to implement some change in our particular area. The tonic, for instance, was very cooperative in terms of turning down their bass, in terms of changing their amplifiers. Code enforcement went into a couple of the bars around the area as well, and actually took away the outdoor bass music that was playing in West Street Market. So, we did get some change. So, we mostly are able to sleep, which is lovely, and I do sympathize with Peggy and the people at The Montage that have that, that issue. Before we were able to achieve this change back in January, we had lost many tenants at The Riverwalk because of the noise. Some owners went on to rent their apartments, so that the whole tenor of our condo was changed by the noise. A lot more young people moved in, a lot more renters that didn't really have the willingness to keep up the condo. Now, I'm concerned about the singer, so I'd like, excuse me, to make my comments about whether the singer lounge should get their nightclub license, or whatever they're doing here tonight, because it will affect The Montage as well as The Riverwalk. And I would ask that, before I totally object to it, that code enforcement perhaps could be asked to go in first, and see just how they're planning to use the drums, the bass, their DJs, the doors that are left open in a lot of the bars, and the windows, such as the Second Street Bar, the same issue occurs. So, we're not only losing tenants, but we're losing sleep. And it became a health problem for several of our people, and one lady actually lost her job because she could no longer work her nursing hours, having not had sleep the night before. So, rather than just overlook this, I think to add another bar into the mix, unless it's sort of been proactive in looking at what could be done to mitigate any potential problems, I would like to ask that. We still have the problem with crowd noise, where 5:30 some mornings, people are still screaming outside our windows. That we've not totally been able to eradicate by just calling police, because they usually don't get there in time to do anything about it. So, I don't know if there is anything in the future that council could do about mitigating the crowd noise, but I will say that once you end the music at 5:30 in the morning, the crowd noise also dissipates. So, I'm hoping that we can deal with the music and the noise issue before it actually happens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there other public comment, general public comment? If this, just to remind everyone, this is general public comment. If there, you can make comment on an individual agenda item now, or you can wait until that item, and we'll also be taking public comment then. You're, you're welcome to make comment now if you'd like. Okay, good. Yeah, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes, and then afterwards, if you'd fill out a request to speak form with the secretary, that'd be great. Thank you.
You have the form, but since you're discussing The Montage and the singer, you might as well group them. I'm here representing the highly organized-
Can you state your name for the record, please?
-600 residents of The Montage, and we have a noise concern.
Can you say your name for the record, please?
I beg your pardon, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
George Foster, 255 North Sierra Street. The concern about noise has already been stated, there's no need to repeat it, but it's been numerous times. I was over to speak with Mr. Daley, and he does have plans to mitigate the noise, but I'm not sure what you can do in terms of enforcement after this additional license is given. He explained his unusual license situation. But we do have this concern about noise, and hope you would take that into account and discuss it with him.
Thank you for your comment. Are there other public comments at this time? Okay, we can't have discussion on general public comment items, just to let everyone know, but I would advise for noise complaints or things like that, to call Reno Direct, and you can use that number often. And it sounds like you guys know the drill, but, you know, just to reinforce that, 334-INFO, is that right? Is Reno Direct?
2099.
334-2099, so. Okay, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, item four, approval of minutes of September 3rd, regular meeting. Any discussion or changes to minutes, or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, city council liaison reports.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard, will need to indicate on the request to speak form provided to, and provided to the secretary. First item, first public hearing item is LDC 15-00005, Reno Aces, City of Reno Ice Rink. Vern, for an introduction for us, thanks. And while you're coming up to the podium, I'd like to take this opportunity to do disclosures. Just, do any of the commissioners have disclosures on this item?
Commissioner Kaufman, I drove by the site.
Commissioner Reno, I helped design this site initially, so I don't know if that matters, but it, it shouldn't on the basis, I just want to disclose that. And obviously, I've seen the site.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Yep. Commissioner Stapleton, me too.
Commissioner Wyskey, as did I.
Commissioner Taylor, I did too.
Commissioner Wusley, as did I.
Okay, thank you. Vern, thanks.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for a special use permit to establish an outdoor ice skating rink. Per the code, the ice skating rink is considered an outdoor commercial amusement recreational facility, which requires a special use permit to establish in the mixed-use downtown Reno Regional Center, Trekkie River District. The site is located on the northeast corner of the Second and Evans intersection. It's basically on the southwest corner of the baseball stadium site. Staff is recommending approval. We did not receive any calls or correspondence on this case. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And do we have the applicant here to do a presentation for us? Thank you.
Hi, Eric Edelstein with the Reno Aces. Not prepared with anything further at this point, other than just to be here to answer any questions or any concerns that may, that may arise. We've worked very closely with the city on putting this entire plan together, and we're very confident that we're going to take a great community asset and enhance it even more by hosting it at the ballpark.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we'll maybe have some questions for you. Vern, do you have anything to add?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. The only thing I have to add is that we believe that all the findings can be made based on the minimal recommended conditions. And again, it's anticipated that this rink would take the place of the rink on the river for about three years while they're constructing the Virginia Street Bridge. But this is to be considered a permanent special use permit. That's all I have to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take public comment, comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Okay. Commissioners, questions? Comments, thoughts? Motion?
Commissioner Reno. Commissioner Reno, I have some questions. Reviewing the packet, Vern, maybe you can help me out here. Reviewing the packet, it looks like they've already entered into a contract with, with the baseball stadium. Correct? Am I correct in this? It was back in April, I think there was a contract already entered into?
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, yeah, the Reno Aces has a contract with the city's redevelopment agency for the rink on the river. It's essentially the equipment that was used for rink on the river. The city council has given it to the RDA, which in turn is going to be supplying it to the Aces Stadium to provide the ice skating rink during the winter months there.
Perfect. I guess I would, mine, that brings up the next question. Were there other sites considered, other than within the downtown redevelopment agency, downtown area?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, I'm not aware of any. Basically, we reviewed the site that was requested.
Okay. I, I see this as a city asset, and I, I wonder, I mean, you even said that this could be a permanent SUP. This could end up permanently over there. Is that correct?
That's a possibility, but that's also up to the city council. Again, when you look at a special use permit, you don't do temporary special use permits, you do, you look at them as though they are permanent. So, that is a possibility. I don't know what the long-term plans on, are on that, but at this point, we're looking at a special use permit to place the ice rink on this site.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Comments, motion? Commissioner Kaufman?
Yeah, I'll just make one, or a couple of comments, I guess. I think this is a nice project to go there, especially, like, they have the Halloween area, and when the Aces Ballpark first came before us, that was kind of one of the things that sold the commissioners of, that they would use that venue for other things besides a baseball stadium. So, I think it's great that the rink goes in there.
Thank you.
I can make all the findings.
Other thoughts or comments? Commissioner Reno.
Commissioner Reno. Yeah, I, I kind of disagree with that, because I, I look at the, the plaza out here, it was designed, specifically designed to take the ice rink. And, and the acceptance of a special use permit that could be permanent, it bothers me a little, because, you know, this plaza may not be used again for an ice rink ever, as the way it stands, and so I kind of disagree that, I, I believe it's a great asset, and I think it's great, and I wonder why it was only considered at the Aces, why not consider it maybe at the Summit Sierra Mall, or some other places in town, too, during this three year period. But I think it needs to have its good home that was designed, it was designed to be there. That whole plaza is made for the ice rink. So, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Kaufman, thanks.
Case of LDC 15-00005, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
So, I have a second?
Commissioner Wusley, I second that, I can make all the findings.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Was that an aye? All, all opposed?
Aye, me, opposed.
Let me do that one more time, just to be clear for the record. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Reno opposes.
Thank you.
Oh, you want the, you want the finding?
If you'd like to put that on the record, let's, just for the record, the vote was six, the vote, the vote was six one, so the motion passes. Commissioner Reno, if you'd like to make a comment?
Well, I'll make, yeah, Commissioner Reno, the reason I opposed it is, I don't think that I can make finding, well, finding A, I can't make, if the proposed is compatible with the existing land uses and development. And, and I'm saying that because of this development was made for the ice rink. That's why.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder for commissioners, before we go on to the next item, that it is good to make sure you cite findings, and we have an opportunity to do that as, after the motion, we can go in discussion and do that if we need to, and that was my fault for not reminding us of that, so, thank you. Onto the next item, LDC 15-0002, Peavine Peak. Vern, and, or, Vern, yes, thanks. And any disclosures on this before we get started?
I'm Chair, Commissioner Wyskey, I visited the site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Taylor, I've been to the site.
Commissioner Wusley, I visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Good, I was gonna say, I didn't visit the site either, but thank you, everybody. Okay, Vern, thanks.
Good evening again, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for several special use permits as required by code. The first is for hillside development, the second is for grading which results in cuts of 20 feet or more, and for non-residential development located adjacent to residentially zoned property. The area that's proposed to be graded is about 13, 14 acres, and it's located on the northern portion of a 239-acre site up in this area here, which is about 1,000 feet south of North Virginia Street on Peavine Peak Road. This is a more specific area. That shows the area where the pads are proposed, and the zoning that it's proposed on, the zoning is industrial. Staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions in the staff report. We did receive several calls. Most of them were informational, just wondering what this was all about, and it was explained that any other further construction on the site grading, other than this, would also require a special use permit for the same reasons, and potentially for major drainage way grading. We also received a phone call and a letter from a neighbor who lives about 1,000 feet to the north. The letter we received by fax this afternoon about quarter to five, and his basic comments were that the case should not be heard tonight because it needs to be further reviewed before it goes to a public hearing to address and assess the drainage and erosion, you know, characteristics of the proposed grading. Again, staff is recommending approval, and I'll be happy to answer questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have the applicant here? Mr. Rayly?
Good evening. For the record, Mike Rayly with Rubicon Design Group, here on behalf of the applicant. This is actually a fairly simple request, in terms of we're grading those pads for future industrial buildings. The export that's gonna occur at the site is gonna be used for another project in the, in the area that's currently under construction. To address the, the facts that came in this afternoon, I think maybe there's a little bit of confusion. That's a slope analysis. As you see, the green is the area of 0 to 15% slopes, so we're, we're actually grading entirely within the industrial zoning designation in the area that's essentially relatively flat. I think if, if you look at the notice, if, if you're not familiar with the Reno code, it seems a little ominous. Talks about, you know, Cuss and Phil's hillside development. We're not, we're not up in the hillside, and the fact that this parcel joins public land to the west. I think that maybe the person that, that wrote the letter thinks that we're further up the hill, perhaps. You know, he cites concerns related to the golf course and the wetlands. Those are over, well over a mile away, across the other side of the freeway. We won't have any impact to that whatsoever. We're not familiar, you know, no knowledge of any contaminated soils or anything like that. So, I think he might just be a little confused on where the site actually is. And I can understand that, when you get a notice and you're not familiar with the process, it looks a little ominous. So, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rayly. We'll take public comment on this item. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, commissioners, questions? For the applicant or for staff? Commissioner Taylor?
Vern, just a real quick clarification. All we're doing is talking about the grading tonight, right? If the applicant wants to come back and build something or whatever, there's another process, right? It's just the grading, special grading permits, right?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, the only thing that is being proposed is the grading to use the dirt for, as an export site for another project. Any further, if they parcel this property, if they do any further grading, they build buildings, build a road, all that would require a special use permit because it would be non-residential. If they parcel it such that portions of it aren't adjacent to residentially zoned property, the parcel map would require that. And then depending on the orientation and the final plans they have for the site, pretty much anything requires another special use permit, so. And that will be determined at such time as they come forward with other projects. You're welcome.
Commissioner Wisely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Commissioner Wisely, I have a question for you, Vern. With the, with the export of all the dirt and that's the start of the county road, correct? After the railroad tracks? Is that where it starts? Because that's Peavine Peak Road that goes all the way up to the
This is Peavine Peak Road coming in here. And the railroad tracks run just parallel to this, well, they run parallel to the entire boundary of that site. But the road is there and they would only need to grade a little bit of a road into this site and a small extension into here. They don't need to pave it at this point because there is no project. But when they go to construct buildings on it, then they would have to pave the entire road because the the road is not, I would say it's not really paved from North Virginia Street up to the site. So at such time as they go to develop buildings or other uses on the site, then they would have to pave that road.
What about the concern on the existing dirt road of, of all the the machine work and, and trucks going in and out, removing the dirt?
Well, there is dust control that they have to continuously monitor. They have to put in BMPs to ensure that drainage, you know, isn't impacting storm drains. They're not creating excess erosion. They're going to have to put that, those measures in place when they come in with the permit to the, to do the grading. And also we have construction and staging and access plans that are required for projects like this. So that would be addressed at that time. You know, with engineering staff.
And if there's any degrading of the road after the initial phase of the project? Is that evaluated afterwards?
Getting a little farther into what I know here.
Yeah, for the record, Vilgahl Senior, so, yeah, with their grading permit, they'll also have to get a stormwater pollution permit from the state of Nevada as well as from the city. We'll be monitoring that. They will have to provide with that, as Vern mentioned, you know, erosion control, track out, those types of things. They'll have to maintain that road and they'll have to place that, the road will have to be maintained all during construction so that they're not tracking out, creating hazards with the road itself. And then they will, as part of that, they'll have to make sure that's stabilized and acceptable. Basically, an existing condition for the release of that, that stormwater permit at the end.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Commissioner Levis? I'm not sure if this is for Vern or Mike. Vern had that slide up there though, but, so the while the special use permit is for the entire portion of the map, they only intend to do the grading on the smaller upper-left portion right now for the export? Okay, but it would still be potentially usable for the entire site?
No, the special use permit is specifically for this area that's to be graded. If they go degrade up here later, they need a special use permit, yes.
Okay.
So it's, it's just focused on this 13, 14 acres that will be disturbed for those two pads.
Okay. And you brought up dust control. I guess once you disturb this and vegetation's gone, what's, there's an indefinite timeline as to when it will actually be developed. So what's the long-term dust control plan for the portion that is disturbed?
Per health department requirements, they are required to control the dust during the construction. And then after they're done constructing it, there's a condition and, which is basically reinforced with code, that they have to re-vegetate the site. They have to post a bond and re-vegetate the site. And that usually takes, depending on how well it is done, a cut two to three years for that to establish. But basically they would have a dust palliative on the site and then they would reseed it in the fall. And also you retain the strippings from the surface so that you can reapply that to the pads, which has a lot of the vegetation that you would get on the site. And then that would also be supplemented with seeding that would be consistent with the vegetation on site.
Okay.
Other questions? Motion? Comments, discussion?
I'm prepared to make a motion whenever we're ready.
Okay, Commissioner Wisely?
In the case number of LDC 15-00002, Peavine Peak. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permits subject to conditions. And I can make all the findings A through H.
I'll second the motion, Commissioner Wyskey, and I can make all of the findings.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, seven to one. Next item on the agenda, Market Street Shooting Range, LDC 15-00012.
Madam Chair, just to double check, that was for findings, Commissioner Wisely, from A through H. So that was for the the base special use permit. So there's also the special use permit for hillside development and for the cut slopes of 20-foot greater. If we could maybe have the same motion made for those as well?
So we should do this in three motions?
Just as long as, you can do it in one motion, as long as you're hitting all the findings. I was only, I was concerned that the findings were just A through H.
And could I just amend the original one to add to the special use permit for hillside development, A through E as well as the special use permit for cut slopes of 20 feet and greater? A through, I guess.
A and B.
I guess it is just A and B.
Commissioner Wyskey, I'll second the motion and I can make all of the findings on all three items.
Okay, all in favor again?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, Ms. Hill, let's do disclosures first. Do I have to mention this one that was? Just a moment. Okay, sorry. Commissioner Kaufman, starting with you, any disclosures?
On
What project?
Yeah.
Back to LDC 15-00012, Market Street Shooting Range?
I visited the site and also received several emails.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site and received emails.
Chair Stapleton, I did as well.
Commissioner Wyskey, I received emails and visited the site.
Commissioner Taylor, as did I.
Commissioner Wisely, I visited the site and received emails.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can jump in really quickly, I just want to welcome Alexis Hill to the Planning Commission and thank her for her assistance. She is on loan from the city manager's office to help us with our large workload.
Yeah, thanks, welcome.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do you mind putting up the projection? Again, I'm Alexis Hill. And before you today is a special use permit request for 2325 Market Street. It's south of Yale Street and it is west of Market Street. This special use permit is required because this parcel is located in community commercial and it requires that a special use permit is obtained for an indoor shooting range. Additionally, a special use permit is required to establish an indoor shooting range in a non-residential use adjacent to residentially zoned property. I'm happy to address any questions that you have on the conditions for the permit. And staff does recommend approval. Staff received one phone call of questions on the project and 20 letters in support and one letter in dissent. I would note that the letter in dissent is by the owners of the apartment complex to the south of the requested special use permit site. But the 20 letters in support are actually people who live in the apartment complex. And I'm happy to address any questions you have.
Hey, thank you. Do we have a presentation from the applicant? Hi, welcome. Please state your name for the record. You have 15 minutes if you would like. And please speak into the microphone.
Hi, I'm Debbie Block. Can I have my, my presentation, please? So I'm Debbie Block and I'm with U.S. Firearms Academy. And what we are looking for is a special use permit to, for a first-class plan. We have a first-class plan for a first-class indoor shooting range. Again, it's located at 2325 Market Street. We're going to talk about who we are. We're going to give you a project overview, talk about the consultants and suppliers that will be using, address noise abatement issues and safety concerns, talk a little bit about who our customers are and then do a quick summary. So first of all, we're U.S. Firearms Academy. We opened in November of 2008. Currently, we are retail and internet sales. We provide training for all levels of experience. We also have an indoor digital shooting range, so we do scenario-based training as well. We provide high-quality services and customers and community are very important to us. We are a team of professionals and we have a passion for this business. Again, I'm Debbie Block and I'm president and a founder of U.S. Firearms Academy and the sole owner. I've had 40 years of business experience. All of our team brings a great deal of benefits to our, to our group. We have veterans from the U.S. Armed Forces. We have retired Reno Police Department who are trainers and who are current and also retired. We have people with gunsmithing degree and other certifications. People have been in quality control in other businesses and all of our instructors are NRA certified. So everybody brings a unique talent to our project and a variety of professional certifications. The basic project is to be taking the existing building that's located at this property and with slight modifications on the exterior, the, the main entrance will be at the middle, in the middle of the building. A lot of the open areas, the doors and windows will be covered in order to, to create more protection. So this will, this, these areas right here will be a tile that'll have a wood look. So it's going to be very upscale. All of our equipment will be state-of-the-art. It's again, an upscale atmosphere, both indoors and outdoor, inside and outside. We are very security-conscious, environmentally sensitive and neighborhood-friendly. The color of the building would, the, the part that's orange right now would become the dark gray that would match the dark gray that's in the, the current concrete of the building. This is a basic draft of what we are proposing for our indoor plan, the layout. And again, our main entrance is at the middle of the building. And our 20, so when you enter, you'll be entering into the retail area where we'll also be doing our rental. This area that we're pointing out is where we'll have 20, 25-yard lanes. And it'll be divided into a bay of 10, a bay of 6, and a bay of 4. This is a special use, a special events room, which we'll be able to use for conferences or any type of party that, that we could, that we think of, of using it for. We have our scenario-based trainer which is located next to, next to our classrooms and our, our training office. We have provisions for gunsmithing and potential expansion of additional eight shorter lanes. So we only work with a team of, a team of experts. And we started out working with MBA architects. And this is important to us that we work with people that have proven, that have proven themselves in their field. So that, that includes all of our acoustical and structural, mechanical plumbing and electricals, people that are going to be working on our project. They're, these are our experts in their field. And I'm also pleased to say that we have engaged as a consultant, Bo Bergerson from C2 Tactical in Arizona. And he's actually a manager, a managing partner of C2 Tactical. And they were actually rated official best range in 2013 in Arizona. They own several ranges, both new and old. The new one was built a year and a half ago. And Bo is in construction, in that construction industry. So he understands both sides of this with great detail. Their, their newer facility that they built out is actually located in a mall. And he's here this evening. So if you have specific details, he'll be able to answer questions. So again, we will be working with leading suppliers of firearms in the firearms industry. And these are people that have proven systems for law enforcement, military and private sector ranges. And by the way, there are about 17,000 indoor ranges throughout the country. So one of the most important parts of the range is obviously the range capture and containment system. And it basically consists of a backstop and ballistic safety ceiling baffles along with the shooting stalls. And again, all of these have been, are being used throughout the country. So this is nothing that we're starting and creating new. What we've chosen is a rubber trap that's a rubber backstop that's a rubber trap. And there are several reasons why we selected that. First of all, it's very efficient, safe, and it's proven technology. It stops the bullets. It minimizes airborne dust. And it minimizes ricochets. Also helps in reducing the noise levels. So what happens is when the rounds go in, it deener, they're de-energized and often captured intact, resulting in little or no bullet, bullet fragmentation. So this makes bullet reclamation and recycling very efficient. So we were talking about one of the parts of, of the important parts is the ballistic safety ceiling and baffles. And that's made up of mixed, mixed materials. Basically, it's like a, it's material that's used in a, on a battleship is, is basically what, what this material is. It's, it contain, it, what it does is it missed, it contains misdirected shots. And it also maintains ballistic integrity. The other benefit is it protects against injuries and against property damage on things such as lights and sprinkler systems. It minimizes also the ricochets and redirects rounds to, in a safe path. And it also helps with the noise attenuation. HVAC is a very important part of this project. And again, we will only work with experts in this, in this area and with proven designs. We will definitely meet all regulatory agency standards. And protecting our customers and our range officers, operators from airborne particulate and gases is vital. and gases is vital. We take this very seriously. In the system for the HVAC, there are a lot of monitoring processes. And so these are just an example of the types of things that we'll have in our range to be able to monitor all of, to monitor the air. Regarding noise abatement, on the interior, we will be using appropriate materials. Design and construction of the interior space will be vital in, in helping to keep the noise abatement under check. And as far as the exterior is concerned, we will be controlling parking along the south end. And we will be meeting, or actually probably better than meeting, the 29 decibels at the property line for sound. For safety on the interior, we will always have a range safety officer. And they're there for enforcing all of the rules and also lending support to anybody who finds that they need it. Maybe they don't know that they need it. But there will always be somebody who is trained as a range safety officer on the lanes. And our train, and the rest of our staff, even if they're not range safety officers, will be trained, especially in screening protocol. We will have posted rules and regulations that will need to be followed. There'll be safety videos and technologies such as cameras and alarm systems. There'll be controlled access, so we will have complete control of that. There'll be, there are routine maintenance and standard operating procedures. So on the exterior, our property will be well-lit. And we will have cameras that will cover the whole area. And again, controlled access, so we'll have a single point of entry to the facility. Our customers are law-abiding men and women. They are beginner to advanced. They're singles, families, and groups. This is basically showing that there's an increase of women coming into this field and wanting to learn about shooting. That was something that attracted me to this about six years ago. And we're seeing a great, a great increase of women coming into it. It's very difficult for women to find places to shoot, so we're really giving them an opportunity. And we can also see that people are older, are getting younger and, but they're over 18. So there's not a lot of people under 18 that are, that will be probably coming in. So in summary, we have a first-class target shooting facility where we feel that we've been welcomed by the neighbors of everybody. I went out and I talked to everybody in the neighborhood and I didn't get any negative comments. We are professional operation and we're very, very safety-conscious. We're environmentally responsible and sensitive to our neighborhood needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Block. Ms. Hill, do you have anything to add or additional, anything additional to present to us?
I think that the applicant did a nice presentation for the planning commission, but if you have questions about specific conditions, we feel that we have addressed a lot of the concerns with the residential adjacency with the parking conditions that we placed on the parcel, as well as the decibel requirements and the study that they'll have to do. Additionally, the applicant is going to replace trees on site and beautify the site. So we feel that the, the project meets all the conditions for approval. If you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you. We most likely will. And thank you, Ms. Block, we most likely will for you as well. But let's open it up for public comment first. I have Mr. Thank you, Mr. Wright. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Ray Wright. I'm the general manager of Chester's Reno Harley-Davidson. We occupy currently 50% of the building where the shooting range would go in, as well as having our main motorcycle showroom at 2315 Market Street. And we're also the owners of the third building located on that site at 2335 Market Street. We've had the opportunity to meet with the folks from U.S. Firearms Academy. We still have a couple of things that we're in discussion with as far as how we're going to work together in terms of traffic and parking and things like that. But we're very optimistic. We feel that we can certainly work with them and resolve any of those issues. And I'm just here tonight to tell you that we certainly support it. We think we have some unique opportunities to market motorcycles in a shooting range. And it would probably be a very good use for that property. So we're in support of the project.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Anyone else like to make a comment? Commissioners, questions for staff or for the applicant on this project?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wieski, you have question for staff? Good evening.
Good evening.
Condition number six on page two of your staff report discusses decibel readings between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And I didn't see anywhere in this application that the applicant is looking for 24-hour use.
No, they're not.
What is their hours of use?
7:00 AM till 11:00 PM.
Okay.
I'm sorry for the confusion on that.
Okay. No, that, that's fine. That answers that question. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Other questions?
This would be for Deborah, applicant. Do you operate or have you been operating any other shooting ranges?
We have a digital shooting range right now. No, I haven't operated one, but I have a team of people that have. So some of my staff have been involved in operating ranges. And that's why I have hired people that have, that are doing that. So I have consultants that help. And I've been working on this for about five years now. So I've attended the NRA Range Development Course, as well as a number of other courses and classes throughout the years.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Other questions? Commissioner Taylor?
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. On your presentation, this goes back to Commissioner Wieski's comment on number, on number six. Is it going to be 49 or 65?
We're just going to keep it at 49.
Okay. I thought you said 29, so I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. But, but that's just of our noise, because the, the noise, the decibel rating is 50 there right now if there's nothing. So that's from the traffic. And, and maybe to just embellish a little bit on the other question that I answered was, what?
That's fine. I think you addressed Commissioner Taylor's question.
Right.
Thank you.
Just to throw in there, we do go down to a live-fire range, so we do have, operate, you know, within a live-fire range. It's not my own and it's not indoor. I don't know if that helps.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for staff. The, the comment cards that looks like are from the residents, did, was there a meeting or was, was, how were these solicited from the folks in the surrounding area?
That would need to be for the applicant, because they were brought to me by the applicant. I think that the applicant met with them individually.
Okay. They were great. I was just wondering what the mechanism was for getting the input from the surrounding residents?
So I created a form.
Please state your name for the record, Ms. Block.
I'm sorry. Debbie Block. I just created a form and I dropped off blank forms at everywhere that I, you know, that we went to within about a 750-foot area and just dropped them off. And so I, I did talk to people, but I, you know, I wasn't there. They didn't fill it out and hand it to me. I went back and some of them I picked up and I think some of them might have been sent in. So I just made it easy for them to, to express their opinion.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. It's great to have the public input, especially with the NABs gone. I'll just sneak that in there. That's great to have and appreciate you doing that. Thanks. Other comments or questions from the commission? Okay. Discussion, motion?
Commissioner Wieski, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion in the case of LDC 15-00010. I'm sorry. In the case of LDC 15-00012 Market Street Shooting Range. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions, and I can make all of the findings.
Hey, do I have a second?
Commissioner Reno, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Great job. Next item on the agenda is LDC 15-00010 TMCC IGT Applied Technology Center variance. I have a memo. And the memo says that this item was pulled due to an error identified in the project noticing, noticing of this request. The project will be re-noticed for the October 15, 2014 Planning Commission Public Hearing. So if you're here for that item, it's been rescheduled till next time. Next item on the agenda, LDC 15-00015 Singer Social Club. Mr. Gilbert. And while you're getting ready, do we have any disclosures?
I've drove by the site and received several emails. Commissioner Kaufman.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site and received emails.
Commissioner Olivas, I've visited the site and received emails.
Chair Stapleton, I also visited the site and received emails.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I.
Commissioner Taylor, as did I.
Commissioner Wiesky, as did I.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. This is a special use permit request to establish a nightclub use in the downtown Reno Regional Center Entertainment District. The applicant intends to expand his existing bar operation, which a bar use is allowed by right, into a live performance venue to facilitate live entertainment, recorded music, DJ, dancing, and karaoke uses. The primary concerns for a project of this nature are operational noise, noise from patrons entering and exiting the building, and site security and management. That's why a nightclub use requires a special use permit granted from the planning commission. Staff recommends approval of the request with the attached 15 conditions related primarily to those characteristics, operational, and noise liabilities, and, which were reviewed by code enforcement, Cindy Goblanco, who is the code enforcement officer for that portion of downtown and Reno, the Reno Police Department. The applicant is also available to discuss his request, specific request further, and I'll be available for questions at the appropriate time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have a presentation or comments from the applicant? You have 15 minutes if you'd like. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Brett Silva, owner of Singer Social Club. I just wanted to be able to address any questions you would have. We're going to be able to mitigate sound by, we have a double-lined steel front door and we're currently installing a sound curtain three feet inside, so there'll be a, two ways of egress to shut the sound off as people are exiting.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Silva. I'm sure we'll have some questions for you, so stay close. We'll open public comment on this item, and I'll start with Sharon Elidge. Hope I said that right. Okay. You have three minutes.
Hope it goes low enough. I also reside at the Montage.
State your name, please.
And my name is Sharon Elidge. I am very much opposed to another nightclub. I myself walk the perimeter of the Montage. And at the current time, there are seven operating nightclubs and the potential for two more on Sierra Street, which are vacant now, the Rise and the Old Vino. While I can appreciate that this applicant has a number of conditions, there are a lot of stinkers in those seven nightclubs that are operating. Specifically, in my instance, the One Up. They play that low-end bass music that booms and vibrates and keeps us awake virtually until 6 o'clock in the morning, almost every weekend. So I have been working with code enforcement, police, anyone that will listen to me, and they are making progress. But I would like to see a moratorium on any further special use permits for nightclubs in that area and give the city a chance to clean up the ones that are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elidge. Other public comment on this item? Please approach the podium if you've got public comment. If you have public comment, you've got to come up to the, to the front and please state your name for the record. And you have three minutes if you'd like.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Suzanne Dotton and I'm from the Riverwalk. And I want to say ditto to everything said by the Montage. It has taken years. And to just say, to call Reno Direct, I'm afraid is not inadequate. We have been to the city attorney and on his advice got, back in January, 30 people to send emails to code enforcement to finally get them involved to help us with a couple that were right near us. Now, One Up is still a problem with their bass. They still do that. And I must tell you, it vibrates the furniture in your room. If you have your windows closed, you can feel it. It's impossible to tune out. And we have really good windows at the Riverwalk. They tune out just about everything. You can't tune that out. And it does keep you awake all night. And their clients stand outside and scream until 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning. And usually on Sunday morning, they're there until quarter to 7:00. They're still there when the church begins its mass, the Catholic Church on the corner. So this is an ongoing problem. And I think if the police ever counted the number of complaints we've made over the many years, it would be in the hundreds. So it's not just calling Reno Direct. The bars need to cooperate, and we do have some that have. And I, let's give commendation to the tonic for stopping their problem and getting a bass damper. Other than that, I just wanted to support her and again, ask, you know, it sounds like Cindy has gone there. And I do appreciate the fact that this particular nightclub does have the double doors and the sound curtain. I, I hope that will be enough if you decide to approve it. I, for one, also would like to put a moratorium on the number of bars until we've corrected the problems that we do have. You've made it a residential district. It's not just an entertainment district. This is a mixed-use area. And there was a lot of all this, oh, come to Reno. Well, you haven't fixed it. And until you do, I hate to see another bar go up. So I agree with the Montage.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Last call for public comment. Okay. Commissioners, questions for staff and/or the applicant?
Commissioner Kaufman, I have a question for the applicant. Actually, it's for staff. I'm sorry. They don't need a special use permit, Nathan, to go past 11?
Commissioner Kaufman, excuse me, one second. Can we get mics turned up a little bit? I'm having a hard time hearing. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kaufman, can you hear me now? Michelle thought I yelled last time. Do they need a special use permit to go past 11?
For a bar, is a use allowed by right? This area is in the mixed-use downtown Reno Regional Center Entertainment District. Within that district, bars aren't restricted. They, a bar can operate by right with the privilege license from, from city council, but 24 hours a day. The distinction here is live entertainment and, and music. That, that is what established this, this use as a nightclub, and that requires a special use permit. If the nightclub, if the planning commission would feel that, you know, restricting hours of operation for the nightclub activity itself, now that's specifically live music, entertainment, dancing, and that sort of thing, that could be restricted as a part of the special use permit. But the bar, serving of alcohol by itself, is allowed 24 hours a day by standard code.
Other questions? I have a question, so I'll jump in for the applicant. And perhaps for staff, I'm not sure who best to answer this. I was looking at your Exhibit A about the acoustic sound study. And I'm wondering, maybe let me start with Nathan, actually, if you can answer this, but stay close.
let me start with Nathan, actually, if you can answer this, but stay close. Do you guys require a certification or a certain criteria for someone who's doing the sound? I'm just wondering if, if you have to have, if there's some certification for a sound engineer? It looks like this is just a private individual, and I Googled it, and I didn't find a, and just wondering if you have a standard when, when you, when stuff like this comes to you.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. No, we don't have an established standard. We've used various, I don't even believe there's an acoustical engineering consulting firm in Northern Nevada, ones that I've seen that have used more sophisticated, you know, sound engineers are coming from California. We have used for similar projects, people with similar credentials, sound, sound engineers, recording engineers, people that have the equipment and the decibel guns. They're not, they're not inexpensive pieces of equipment, these are people that, that understand sound and how it works, and we found that that has typically been acceptable. Also, our code enforcement division does have the same measuring equipment to measure audio decibels.
Great, and so the next question is, did you guys do the measurement, or did the applicant, Mr. Silva, do the measurement? And if so, what time did you do it?
Well, we did it at...
Thanks, come up to the mic and make sure to say your name. Thank you.
Brett Silva, we did the study at about ten-thirty at night, and had the decibel levels about ninety to ninety-five inside to measure outside.
Okay. Okay. And then I have one more question for the applicant. Actually, I'll, I'll follow up later with staff, thank you. Other question, there's questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Wozniak?
Was hoping to catch you, you're still up there. I was curious about the, do you have any experience with the sound curtains, or I've done research to, to see how much that is supposed to reduce decibel levels?
I don't. I know I've worked in other bars and clubs in the area that have had them that help when, years ago, BLCC used to be satellite, they had one installed that helped with the sound exiting, and we're going to constantly monitor the decibel level outside to adjust the volume inside.
And if I remember right, you, you don't have any windows that opened?
No. Well, there's one window, but we close doors and windows at ten o'clock.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Wysocki?
Thank you. Mr. Silva, I've got a couple of questions for you. Your Exhibit A is, is a letter from Live Sound, Kyle Jones, Live Sound Engineer. It's not on letterhead, and I don't see a report from Kyle Jones, other than the decibel readings that, that are printed. Is, is he a degreed engineer? What, what is...
He's a sound engineer for Eldorado.
Okay.
In their, in their theater.
Okay. Did, did he do any additional sound tests? Because typically, when we get something like this, we get additional sound testing. What were the, the live sounds on the street at ten-thirty at night? Vehicle noise? What is there to back up this Exhibit A? Because it's, to me, I am not a sound engineer, but I have seen enough of these reports come through, that there's a lot of information missing for what I would consider a complete report.
Okay. The initial reading was taken inside the bar, the, that was at ninety to ninety-five. The second one was at the doorway with the doors open, and the third, right at sixty, was with the doors closed at the back of the sidewalk.
Okay, so, but we don't know what road noise was that night? We don't know what the sound level in the alley to your west was? We don't know what it is to the parking lot to the north or to your west?
No.
Okay. As far as you know, those sound levels weren't taken?
No, they weren't taken at those locations.
Okay. Can you show me anything that shows your interior floor plan of where your live stage will be, where your speakers will be located, what your entry vestibule looks like, or your
This is the main entrance, right here, and the vestibule is going to go in...
Can you pull that mic over? Pull that over with you, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Silva.
This is the entry for the bar, right here. The vestibule is going to come out three feet and turn across the door, going from floor to ceiling, fourteen feet to keep sound out. The stage is on the other side, that's contained by, it's brick on, brick walls on all sides.
Okay.
And this backsides the fire exit door. But these front two doors here are lined on the inside and outside with quarter and, or three-eighths in steel. That does really keep the sound out.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that information. Last question is for, for staff. Just for the record and clarification purposes, Nate? It's my, my understanding that Planning Commission cannot recommend a moratorium nor put one in place, those are to be done by City Council. Is that correct?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. The Planning Commission can initiate a text amendment.
Okay. Okay. But final decision would go before...
Final decision would ultimately be the City Council.
Okay.
If, if I may also point out that, when a special use permit is granted, and particularly for a nightclub, if there are issues, the Planning Commission can choose to revisit the special use permit, revisit the conditions, or recommend it be sent to City Council for further action, including denial. So that is an option that the Planning Commission has. Also, there are a number of bars that operate under characteristics of a nightclub without a special use permit, and that is another potential enforcement tool that Alex Woodley is spearheading and coordinating, further focusing on this area. But in this example, their application for business license was clearly to establish a nightclub. They're going through the special use permit process, where the Planning Commission can evaluate our recommended conditions of approval, or add additional ones as they see fit. If those conditions aren't met, this nightclub, a special use permit can be returned to the Planning Commission to, to review what, if anything, needs to be tweaked, or if the special use permit entitlement itself would need to be referred to council for possible revocation.
Okay. One more question for you, Nate. Hours of operation for the nightclub, were those presented? I, I did not see them in the disc of application, maybe I just missed it in my review.
They were listed in the staff report. They vary, I think the most, it was Thursdays, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Silva, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday was until 3:00 AM for the nightclub operation.
Okay. But we could recondition that?
You could recondition that.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Chair Stapleton. I'm going to just follow up with one question about the noise issue for staff, and then maybe for the applicant to follow up on. One of the main concerns seems to be, not only the noise on the inside, and there are ways to address that getting out, but then also the noise on the street at the end of the night, or in the middle of the night, when those folks spill out and probably have had a beer and more, and are loud. In terms of the, the line and the, and the noise that might be made in the line, I see that you have a condition for containing the line in an orderly manner. Is there anything also that we can condition, and maybe it's a question for the applicant, to, what, what can you do to keep that noise down outside, you know, as people are going in and also coming out? And maybe once they're off the property, they're off the property, and this is the larger issue, but...
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. There is the condition for their management plan, which is, which is attached in, in your staff report. That does also include an orderly, stanchet-controlled line around the building. They have a management plan to have onsite security when they have live entertainment, and, and they would be subject to the, to their management plan at that point. Bars, again, can operate without any conditions of approval. We, we, we do, of course, have standard city code that says loud and boisterous conduct and, and that sort of thing, it's very difficult to enforce. At least in, in, because a nightclub requires a special use permit, if those characteristics, you know, say a show gets out, and people flood out, and security doesn't ask them to move along away from the property, that's something that could be addressed by revisiting this, if, if need be.
So, for, for example, West Second Street probably has a SUP for...
I don't believe they have a nightclub SUP.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks. Other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Reno?
Yes, Commissioner Reno. Getting back to the hours of operation, as I reviewed them, and I, I thought they were interesting, you know, Tuesday it's till one, Wednesday it's till two, Thursday and Friday it's till three, and I thought that, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I thought that was interesting, but I, I mean, I wonder why one o'clock, two o'clock on, on the general weekdays, can we limit it to midnight on those days, and then maybe extended hours on the weekend? I guess that's within our discretion, but is there a reason why those hours are extended on, in the midweek?
No, that's just kind of what our hours are now, but typically, we've, we've been kind of slow right now, closing at midnight during the week, but that was just kind of open hours.
Mr. Silva, can you, I'm sorry, can you state your name again for the record?
I'm sorry. Brett Silva.
Thank you.
But the stated hours are just kind of general, if it's slow, we close, and if not, we'd stay open.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Taylor?
I don't know if this is for staff or the applicant, but it seems before you came in to the property, it was rundown, and there was lots of code violations.
Yes.
And since then, you've made some improvements. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Because I've drove by there before you guys got there, and it was rundown, so can you tell me a little bit about some of the things that you have done?
I mean, we've completely gutted and redid the whole interior of the building, as well as some of the outside work. We're working on getting the, I'm sure you guys have seen the sign on the corner, that's kind of old and falling apart, but we're working on getting that fixed. And under bar use currently, we don't have to light the parking lot, but I'm working on getting that taken care of for the SUP.
Mr. Silva, I'm going to jump in and ask for you to follow up on your, any thoughts you might have about containing the noise for the folks that live up high, you know, as folks are spilling out of the bar?
Just to get them moving, kind of in an orderly fashion, that they can't loiter around the building and get them moving down the sidewalk. And also, I just wanted to state that, I mean, I know it is still a nightclub, but we kind of just play jazz, blues, old-style music, so it isn't as loud as One Up and some of the other clubs with bass.
Okay, appreciate that. Appreciate the lighting the back parking lot, too, because that was an issue I saw when I went by. Questions? More questions or discussion? Yes.
Commissioner Reno, a quick question for Nathan. So you say that we can revisit this, if we approve it, and we can revisit it in the future. Explain that process. Does it, do we conditionally say, within three years, we'll revisit it, or how does that work?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. There's a provision in code titled revocation of a special use permit that outlines the process. The Planning Commission, it was brought to their attention that, that perhaps the conditions of approval aren't being met, could, could require the applicant to come back and revisit the entitlement, the special use permit nightclub entitlement.
And we would initiate that as a commission?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any discussion before we take a motion on this?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
One more question for Nathan, and, and it's... I'm looking at, at the fifteen conditions, Nathan, and would you point out the condition that shows me the hours of operation for live music? I see it under analysis, but I don't actually see a condition for it.
It would default to, to Condition One, where all, all materials as submitted. That was part of their management plan, and in the staff report, that's the catch-all.
That's where their hours fall. So if, if we, we would just be making a clarification to Condition Number One, if the commission entertains the idea through discussion to modify the, the hours of, of live entertainment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, and then maybe we can have some discussion on this Okay, I, I'll start discussion. I, I am sympathetic to the concerns of the folks in the audience, and just think maybe generally, this is something that we as a commission can, can address, maybe do a future agenda item and have a conversation about this. I, I would also urge you, you know, to work with your, it sounds like you guys know the ropes, like I said before, to go through Reno Direct and work with Code Enforcement Manager Woodley. But also, I would bring this to the attention of the City Council and your, your council representative, if you have not already, but maybe we can talk about that under future agenda items. Commissioners, it sounded like there might be some interest there. I, I'm, I like the fact that all these conditions on, are on there to try to mitigate some of the concerns. In terms of the findings, I'm okay with most of them. I was concerned about finding D to mitigate traffic impacts and providing a safe pedestrian environment, because it's really, you know, having traveled there once upon a time late at night, I mean, especially in the back of that building, you know, and you've got young women, and so, you know, to put some more safety back there and put some lights back there, I think is really important. So if that's a commitment, you know, then that helps me on finding D. Thoughts from other Commissioners?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wysocki? I have a couple of comments to make. I'll, I'll take the easy ones first for consideration from fellow Commissioners. Condition Number Six, the last sentence says, is, "Doors and windows of the club shall be closed during any nightclub operation and at 10:00 PM." I, I would like to make a consideration, after the word "and" in the very last sentence, remove the word "at," add the word "between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM." That would ensure that between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM, seven days a week, that the windows are to remain closed, and the doors, except for the egress, which is typically where the majority of the noise escapes, although in the floor plan I saw tonight, it's kind of nice, the way they're mitigating it by moving the live stage off to one side, having a common wall dividing it, and, and then even breaking down the area of the access in and out of the building with an additional sound wall. I think it will make a big difference. The other condition that I would like to, consideration for is Number Nine, and again, the last sentence, "sweeping and picking up of any trash around site perimeter shall be required at close of business." I would like to add two words to that sentence, "each day." So it's, it's very clear. I know that in the analysis and, and in the application, I read that that's the intent of Mr. Silva as the business owner. Some of what we see down the road is Mr. Silva could develop a very respectable, profitable nightclub and decide to sell it, and the next owner is not so respectable, and this limits the future ownership to the same requirements Mr. Silva's agreed to. The third one, because of the lack of information in the Exhibit A regarding the sound study that was done, I, I would really like to amend Condition One, so that it clearly states that live entertainment ends at two o'clock in the morning. This bar is, has the rights to remain open 24/7. But stopping the music at two o'clock in the morning will only take out a, a portion of what, where the sound complaints are coming from, but it might be the largest sound complaint. And again, it's not the music that was described this evening that is planned on currently, it's the music and ownership, and/or ownership in the future that may be an issue. And several surrounding states, we're a 24-hour state, and that's something that we contend with, and I'm all for it, but without making other conditions of separation between an entertainment district and a residence and multi-use areas... district and a residence and multi-use areas, I'm not opposed to stopping live entertainment at 2:00 in the morning. And that's a consideration, and I would like to hear some discussion from my fellow commissioners.
Where would you like that, on which condition?
It would, because it's, the hours of operation fall under condition 1, it would be a clarification on page 3 in analysis, the last sentence of the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, first one under land use compatibility, are the hours of operation, and I could make the findings if we stopped the live entertainment at 2:00 AM. Nate, would you like to jump in and?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, perhaps a cleaner way would be to add a condition, taking those hours of operations listed in the staff report and modifying them in an additional.
Okay, then. If the commission, after discussion, agrees with my suggestion, maybe we look at adding a condition number 16 to this application. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure, other discussion? Commissioner Olivas?
Yeah, I got a question for Nathan. I guess along those lines, under land use compatibility, proposed nightclub operations has hours. I guess with this, as the nightclub operation hours, whether it's in the condition or in the analysis, are they still allowed to operate as a bar 24 hours?
Yes.
So that's, I guess, further restricting what's already in here is what you're getting at.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas, what I'm trying to do is just to restrict the, or put a earlier stop to the live music, DJ music, you know, to 2:00 AM, but the bar has the right to remain open 24/7 under normal operating conditions.
Commissioner Reno?
Just to clarify that, Commissioner Wieske, you're saying 2:00 AM on the Wednesday through Saturday? Is that what you're saying? Or just generally 2:00 AM?
Open for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, honestly, if you guys want me to pick days, I'll pick Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. But I'm open for discussion if somebody in this commission thinks that it's best that it goes straight across the board and make it easier to operate, or you want to do whatever, that's what this discussion's for.
Okay. Quick question, Nathan. Reading this analysis on The Times, Sunday and Monday, there is no live music. Am I to understand that? Because it isn't listed, correct?
We're closed.
You're closed on Monday, Sunday and Mondays?
Yeah, but we stay open.
Please, if you're going to speak, make sure to say your name.
I'm Brett Silva. We are closed Sunday and Monday, but we have Sunday open for special events. We've done like an after-wedding party or stuff like that.
But there won't be live music for that, because that's, as far as the way it's written?
Typically not. If we did, it would be during the day for, you know, for an event like that. It wouldn't be at night.
Okay.
Other comments, discussion? Commissioner Taylor? Okay, I will weigh in. I am supportive of generally trying to limit this a little bit, but I'm concerned that if we single out the Singer Social Club on this one, that this isn't really equitable to the other business owners in that district, and it probably is not going to even touch the larger problem that's happening here. It sounds like he's probably the least offensive of these guys with the style of music he's got. And, you know, knowing some of the other bars that are down there, I'm thinking of West Second, I'm thinking of, what's the bar where they do karaoke till all hours, next to the pizza place and next to Tonic? Some of those probably that don't even have nightclub licenses that are probably worse offenders. And so, I don't know if I can support limiting his license or his ability to operate and compete with these guys in a way that I think is not necessarily equitable if we're not addressing it in a way that's fair to everybody. So I don't know if I can support that condition as it has been suggested, although I definitely will be in support of a, you know, a larger discussion of this at a future meeting.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Yep, Commissioner Kaufman.
I would agree with that. If there's, if somebody wants to stay out till 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, they'll go from the singer's bar down to the next bar, and that might create more noise for them getting from one spot to another than, you know. And so personally, I'd rather go with what the applicant has recommended.
Commissioner Taylor, I have to agree with both of you, and this is my reasoning. It seems like there's been a lot of conditions put on this, and staff has done a really good job of making sure that they're trying to address everything that's happened in the past. So there's 15 conditions so far that we've already put on it, and it seems almost like we're punishing him for people in the past. That's my two cents.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Woodley?
Yeah, I'd like to add in. So I actually agree with almost all of you. I think there kind of needs to be kind of a balance between the two. I definitely agree with not punishing this applicant for what some others are doing in the area that may be not under their right licensing or their entitled use. We want to put in our conditions what we want to see from now on for all future nightclubs. And I do think that some of the clarifications that Commissioner Wieske had mentioned are valid. Obviously, talking about the times if something needs to be discussed, but, you know, going, you know, clean up after each day, clarifying the, during nightclub operation and between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, you know, that could be clarified. I completely agree with those. But as far as the times go, I think that would probably need to be discussed.
I just want to clarify, too, Chair Stapleton, that I agree with that, and I didn't say that. I agree with all of your changes to the conditions, save the one on the time. Other thoughts?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieske, for the record, I threw that out for discussion because, not because I'm dead-set on 2:00 AM, and it's not a reflection on Mr. Silva. It's an SUP that goes with a property. It's an SUP that stays with a property and no sunset clause. Okay? So at what point do we start to set a new precedence for the bars downtown? We've just been instructed this evening by Nathan several times that we can go back and reopen some of the special use permits that appear to be causing some problems within the neighborhood. And if we start to establish the precedence of 2:00 AM, maybe the precedence is 3:00 AM, Mr. Silva, and you're helping us establish the 3:00 AM precedence, then we have something to go back with as a precedence to these previous SUPs that we should later discuss reopening or reviewing. And I know because several of us commissioners have sat on this commission long enough in the last four or five years, that we have listened to most of the bars come through here that requested the SUPs that our audience is discussing tonight. And we thought we were doing things right then, and we thought we had good clients and good business people then, and here we are, maybe not dealing with the same owners, but we're dealing with the issues over and over again. It's not a deal breaker for me. I'm in favor of this SUP with some minor modifications, but the discussion of ours is more for discussion and precedence than anything.
I will jump in. I agree with you completely, Commissioner Wieske, in concept, and I do think this needs to be addressed and something, you know, there's some, need to be some limits, but I'm not sure that setting a precedent on an individual SUP is the way to do that. I think that to be equitable, it would have to be something like a moratorium, you know, that would then apply where you've got a cap, and not only a moratorium, but also where you're addressing, you know, you're targeting specific businesses that aren't complying and SUPs that might be out of compliance. And I just think to be equitable, I really agree it's something that needs to be addressed, and maybe, you know, you talk about a moratorium, maybe you try to find out if we're at that tipping point where we have enough there. But I think that we really would need to do that in a larger discussion that would apply to all the business owners evenly. That's my two cents. That's my two bucks. Anybody else?
Commissioner Woodley, for the record. So are we going to all discuss our thoughts on the hours, or is there?
Yeah, if you'd still, if you would like to discuss the hours, that's my opinion, but it's, would, yes, please, go ahead.
So my thoughts on the hours are, I agree, we don't want to penalize him too much about what's going on, but agreeing with Commissioner Wieske, this is our chance to, he's only asking for certain hours here, and maybe they can be averaged out along here as far as such random times as far as on Monday versus Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. But, you know, this is also a way to set with this SUP on this property, and that way, there aren't these complaints at 5:00 in the morning and 6:00 in the morning, and so discussing this and actually putting in the SUP, I think is a good idea.
Other thoughts?
Commissioner Wieske, one more thought. And that is that this request is to establish a nightclub, which is live music presented by a DJ or a band or some combination thereof. It does not prevent the Singer Social Club from playing amplified music 24/7. Okay? So alls we're saying is live entertainment. He can still, he can still run stereo system 24/7, and unless I'm wrong in my interpretation of nightclub, and Claudia, if you'd like to jump in and clarify for me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Claudia Hansen, Planning and Housing Manager. A nightclub has a very broad definition actually in code. It's any live or recorded music as the primary use. So if they had a bar with background music playing, then that is not a nightclub. If the music is the primary or the karaoke is the primary entertainment, it actually lists magician shows in nightclubs. So we may want to revisit the definition on a long-term project, but it's any time the entertainment is one of the primary uses.
Thank you. I have no further comments, and like I said, this is not a deal breaker for me. If somebody else wants to make a motion and agree to the hours or whatever the commission wants to do, I'm good to back it.
Yep, Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Reno, I'll weigh in here. When I saw these hours and I was reading through them, I thought they were interesting, and I thought, you know, I think the owner's being respectful here, and he's just operating at the hours he feels like he needs to operate at, and I would support that. I do like the idea of just having it 2:00 AM, at least for this special use permit, just because I think 3:00 AM is getting pretty far late into the night, but I think 2:00 AM is doable for live music. And obviously, the bar is running the whole time, so there's no problem there, but I think 2:00 AM is reasonable.
Other thoughts or a motion?
Commissioner Olivas, I guess I'm okay with the hours and with a lot of the discussion. It sounds like this is a condition problem on other SUPs and enforcement problem, and I like the idea of potentially reopening the SUP, and I guess, I forget, Nathan, how did you say that happens? Again, how's that initiated? Or could it be conditioned to be reviewed, or?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, I mean, you could condition it to come back, but the planning commission always has the ability to bring an SUP back for revisitation.
That'd be initiated by the commission?
By the planning commission.
Potentially by neighborhood complaints?
It could be brought to the commission's attention, but ultimately, the planning commission would need to.
Are there other avenues in the city for that to come before us, to, if it's not brought to our attention, for the neighbors to bring it, and I guess not just on this project, but on other projects, too?
Not that I'm aware of.
So just through their communications with us, then we would need to bring it forth?
Correct.
Yes, Commissioner Taylor?
Can I ask that? Can I question?
Can you ask that?
Can I question? Is there a big difference between 2:00 and 3:00 to you?
No, the time.
Please state your name, thanks.
Sorry, Brett Silva. The times that we have pulled a special event permit for a band, it's typically from 10:00 to 12:00, 10:00 to 1:00. I haven't gone past that time anyway for...
Okay, so if we say 2:00 AM, it's not going to put you out of business anyway, right?
No, that just means I can't have live entertainment after 2:00 AM.
Okay.
Does that include dancing? Because that's what I was told this whole SUP was kind of about, that I couldn't have, it had to be a nightclub rather than a bar to have dancing.
Can staff answer that, please?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, dancing is a use that triggers a nightclub SUP.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what have we got? I think generally?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fred Turnier, Community Development Director. I just want to be specific or be clear with the planning commission about the revocation procedures for the special use permit, and the planning commission could bring up this issue, but the way it reads is that typically if there's a lot of code enforcement issues on a specific property, that staff could bring that forward as part of an enforcement action with the business, is that essentially, along with the code issues coming up, we're going to bring this to the planning commission, have a discussion about revocations. I just want to be clear that typically it's part of a bigger process with code enforcement.
Thank you, Director Turnier. Okay, so?
I would be willing, Commissioner Taylor, for the record, I'd be willing to support this with the first two conditions on condition 6 and condition 9, adding the between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM, and then with the condition of picking up the trash each day. I will support what you guys think about the hours, but that's not a deal breaker to me, just to say my thoughts.
Which is a deal breaker, the? Okay, okay.
I would support it without.
Do you want to make a motion?
Do we want to wait?
Some, oh.
We lost one.
You did lose one.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wieske. Like I said twice already, I don't want to go into it again, I will support this with the hours the way they are, but I, and I will make recommendation or ask later in our agenda when it's appropriate for a future agenda item to review these hours, and we can have an open discussion with staff at a later date.
Okay.
Commissioner Olivas, I'm okay with the hours as they are. I think we need to work on the enforcement and the process for that more than anything.
Okay, sounds great. Do we need to wait for Commissioner Kaufman to make a motion? Can I make a motion if no one else is making a motion?
I'll make, I can make a motion. In case number LDC 1500015, Singer Social Club, based on the continued compliance with the findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions with the addition in number 6, adding the word "between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM," and number 9, I think it was the second sentence, adding "each day." And I after the word "business," adding "each day," and I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Wieske, I will second Commissioner Taylor's motion with the amendments, and I can make all of the findings.
Okay, do we have any discussion before we take a vote? I just want to say to the applicant, know that this SUP was asked for after the fact, and so appreciate your working with the city, abiding with the rules, and really carrying out all these conditions that you said that you would. And so with all of these, I also can support the motion. Any other comments before we take a vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to make sure that Mr. Silva understands that, you know, you're one more in the group. Don't be a part of the group, because obviously, our sights are set on the group. set on the group. Thank you.
Do we need to repeat the motion for Commissioner Kaufman? We have a motion on the table and a second, we're about to vote, and we will repeat the motion for you. I hope I don't have to do that.
Do I have to read it word for word? Basically, the motion is to approve it, no restrictions on the hours with the conditions that Commissioner Wieski added to conditions six and nine.
Okay.
And to 2:00?
No.
No change of hours.
Are you clear on the motion, Commissioner Kaufman?
I am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you very much, good luck with your project. At this time, we are going to take a break before we go to our next item. We're going to take a seven-minute break. Five minutes. We're going to take a seven-minute break, so we will see you back here at 8:19. Oh, I want to read the appeal process also on that last item, sorry. Any action taken by the Planning Commission on a tentative map, SUP variance, or Skyway is final unless it's appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person or entity must make his or her own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the Planning Commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the City Council with Planning Commission recommendation. Okay? And we will go to agenda item LDC 14-00023, West Meadows Estates. Do we have an introduction from staff, this item? Director Ternier, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fred Ternier, York Community Development Director, and I'm going to start this off before I turn it over to Nathan, the case planner, because you might have noticed, the staff report is a little light moving forward, and I just wanted to give a little bit of background, how we got here and what's being presented tonight. As you recall, in August, you did hear a master plan amendment and a plan unit development for the West Meadows Estates. The master plan was technically denied by the Planning Commission, and it moved forward to the City Council in August, at the end of August. And at that point, the City Council, Reno City Council, approved the special use, I'm sorry, the master plan amendment by a 6-1 vote. Seems to be on loud here. So what they approved was a special planning area for the site, and as you know, you've seen this before, special planning areas for a master plan designation sets up, sets up the zoning for a plan unit development to be submitted. And before you tonight is the plan unit development that you heard originally at Planning Commission. Because of timing, this was originally planned for November, we were asked to bring this forward at that time, forward at the October meeting. At that time, we did say we would be happy to bring this forward for the October meeting, but we would defer to the applicant to help address the issues that have changed from the original planning and development. And I believe you'll hear from the applicant tonight that will talk about, through his public outreach and input process, he's lowered the density, he's addressed a lot of the community's concerns. So from a process standpoint, planning unit developments, they're not something we take lightly, those are vesting documents of 20-plus years. So essentially, you have a plan unit development for 20 years out in this area, and anything built out there hopefully will be there for 50-plus years. So we don't take this lightly, bringing these items forward or rushing them forward. Just on September 24th, Regional Planning did approve the master plan amendment for this item, for this project at Regional Planning. And again, tonight, we do have members of the school district here, we have Mike Boster back over here, and the way staff is looking at this is, some of the issues, such as, I'll just give an example, sewer capacity. If staff was able to look at sewer capacity, say, just make up a number, say, 10 dwelling units, and we recommended approval for that, if it's six dwelling units, likely, we're going to be recommending approval for something less. There are some issues out there that still need to be addressed through this forum, and probably one of the biggest issues is what the community has agreed to with the applicant or what the applicant has agreed to with the community. Parks, there are some issues about the pocket parks, we want to clarify. Fire, you did hear from Chief Hernandez at the last meeting that with the proposed higher density, that he was able to meet the standards or the response time for fire. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to either Nathan to add a little bit more to what's before you tonight, but also to John Kropodick, the owner rep, who could tell you about what the changes are with this plan unit development.
Thank you, Director. Nathan, if you have anything to add?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. I think Director Ternier summed it up well. I would just like to clarify, this is a vesting for tenure, and that the PUD has 10 years to build out or it needs to come back. Also, we have Parks Manager Jeff Mann here, available to answer any questions, in addition to our community development staff.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Kropodick, do you have a presentation for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Kropodick, Commissioners, here on behalf of the applicant. You know, Rob Fitzgerald, he's the lead with West Meadows Estates LLC. As Fred summarized, we did, the last heavy round of outreach was some deal-making with the community back on August 18th. I'm here to represent in most factual form that I can, the agreements we made. So Fred was also correct in that the PUD you had was the four dwelling to the acre version and everything that went with it, and so here's the sum changes of that meeting. I would also like to just point out that if I'm mistaken, or if I'm not mentioning everything that I believe we agreed to, I have mentioned it to Carly, she's been very instrumental in taking the lead for the Verdi Coalition, and assembling the leadership group and all of the people in the communication, which I respect, because I think they've done one hell of a job in orchestrating what they've done. And so she would be here to bring anything that I missed to your attention. So here's, and the biggest issue, of course, was density, it's now 3.1 dwellings to the acre, a maximum of 324 acres, 324 units. Commercial is now four acres of neighborhood commercial, so it's not general commercial, reduced from the 10 acres that we had at the last proposal. What goes along with the commercial, the subsets to that are, the uses eliminating or wedding chapel, landscape material yard, plant nursery slash garden supply, commercial amusement recreation, all of those were allowed in the prior PUD. Next one was reduce the number of hotel rooms.
Mr. Kropodick, can I ask you to stop for a second, please? Madam Chair, I didn't receive this document. Is this document available to us?
No, this is just my PowerPoint today that I prepared for hearing.
Okay, all right. Because it's different than what's in our PUD as an attachment, and the numbers have changed, so that's why...
They should all be reduced, this versus what you have, right? This is...
Well, I don't have a document to compare it to, because I didn't get a document.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Reduced number of hotel rooms to eight, I think, at this point, hotel is a misnomer, we wouldn't have an eight-room hotel, so it would be, it used to be 50, that was a big deal with community, so we removed, I think it would be an eight-room motel. Multifamily was another, we were concerned about mass and bulk and character fitting into the area. I'm giving you a little bit of background of why we negotiated these. So they were okay with multifamily, but less intense building sizes, so we agreed to four dwelling per building, fourplexes and whatever we could fit on the commercial area. If the commercial wasn't built, that would be a substitute. SUP required uses, that was after 11:00 was allowed in the PUD that came to you last time, we are now saying it would be, an SUP would be required for anything that's proposed in the commercial after 11:00 PM. Also now new is the SUP required for the multifamily in the commercial. And then the last thing we agreed upon was if, for some reason, the developer was to scrap the commercial, he would get the same density in there, which would be 12 units, and the math is three times four there. We did add a pocket park, there's some different perspectives there. The idea was that this would be very focused, and how did I say it, precise amenities for young children, families that live in this neighborhood. The idea was that we're doing a lot of open space, open space improvements for public, public access, including the Fisherman Access Point and the Trailhead Access Point, so this would be a park that's really intended for this neighborhood. The construction hours, somebody had an issue with 7:00 AM on Saturday, so we moved that to 8:00 AM start time on Saturday. And then also was a concern about easement, I think it's obvious, but I think it was important to one person or several people, for that matter, and so we agreed to granting an easement for access to wildlands. That is the sum of my changes, so I would like to reserve time, Mr. Fitzgerald may want to speak for rebuttal to what some of the neighbors have to say, and then also wanted to make sure that Carly or anybody else that was part of our meeting would be in agreement with what I've summarized.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kropodick. Can we, is that a practice we usually do, to reserve time? I'm not opposed to it, but, okay, thanks, yeah, no problem. Mr., does Mr. Fitzgerald want to add anything now, or do you want to wait until later?
I'll wait.
Okay, thanks. All right, at this time, we will take public comment on this item. I've got some public comment cards here. We'll begin with Vernon Anderson. Mr. Anderson, please state your name for the record, even though I just said it, and you have three minutes.
I'm Vernon Anderson, I live in Verdi Sierra Pines and have for 38 years. The council meeting, which somebody mentioned three, four weeks ago, we were there, some of us, and there was a gentleman who had a presentation, it was here, right in this room, and he had pictures on the wall, which is, you can see them, we can see them, and it had Donner Lake at 30% of normal, Boca at 28%, and I think Independence Lake at 32%. And Lake Tahoe would soon drop below the rim, and the Truckee River would stop flowing. One of the councilmen sat right in this area, and he grimaced, and he moaned, and he said, "We can't listen to this." And I thought he was going to plug his ears and hum, so that he didn't hear anymore, and he said it was irrelevant. I don't understand how this can be irrelevant, that there's, the water's drying up, and with it are wells, but that's what he did. There's hardly a day goes by that the newspaper doesn't carry information about the drought and admonishing us all not to wash our cars or water our lawns. Often, in the same paper, they'll say, "But there's plenty of water for development." I don't know how anybody reconciles that. And the sewer capacity is at maximum. It's probably not the best example, but I like old movies, and I've watched a lot of them. The Frank Capra movies were corny, some people called them Capra corn. The good guys were all good, and the bad guys were all bad, but they struck a chord. Maybe you really could fight City Hall. Maybe the rich and powerful didn't always get to beat down the regular folks, not every time. In the movie It's a Wonderful Life, usually plays around Christmas, George Bailey was devoted his life to his family, his friends, and citizens of Bedford Falls. It was an idyllic town, and the people were happy, but Mr. Potter, who owned the bank, had other plans for Bedford Falls. George Bailey's little family savings and loan company was about to be gobbled up by rich old Mr. Potter, who owned the bank, and George was ready to jump in the river. Just before he does, he sees a little old man about to go down for the last time, and he jumps into the freezing river to save Clarence. Turns out Clarence is an angel who hasn't earned his wings yet. In order to do that, he has to save George Bailey, who's feeling mighty low and wishing he'd never been born. Clarence, being an angel, is able to show George what the town would look like if he'd never been born. For one thing, Mr. Gower, the town pharmacist, would have poisoned the child by mistake. George's brother would have died in a sledding accident and not received a Congressional Medal of Honor for saving the men in Europe. Bedford Falls and Bailey Savings and Loan would all belong to Mr. Potter's bank. The bars would be open all night, drunks and strip joints would be on Main Street. In fact, Bedford Falls would not even exist, it would all be just Potterville. We don't live in Potterville, and we don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next up for public comment, Rich Laverde?
Laverde.
Laverde.
Good evening. My name is Rich Laverde, and I'm a resident of Verdi. I'm an architect, general contractor, and have been involved in entitlement process in many projects. I'm not in favor of this project as presently as it stands, and I would like to read a reason for that from the Reno Gazette Journal, headline on September 25th, Sewage Plant is Near Full Capacity. Limits Could hinder Future Development. Cities' Ability to Constantly Keep Up With the Nitrogen Load Has Brought to Light A More Pressing Problem That the Treatment Plant Is Nearing Its Capacity For Additional Sewer Hookups Which Could Limit Development. Also, the violation means a state may begin installing approval for new subdivision maps, which would need sewer hookups. If the cities can't prove they can mitigate the nitrogen. According to the internal memo obtained by the Reno Gazette Journal, the treatment plant has a capacity for only 3,800 more hookups. Sparks Assistant City Manager Neil Klutz said that the 3,800 additional sewer hookup figures does not include about 16,000 hookups for subdivisions that have been approved but not yet built, but he acknowledges the capacity issue is a problem. As a responsible commission, I would like you, in your discussion period, to understand what your policy is relative, in approval process, relative to this project and future projects relating to sewage capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laverde. Next, Michelle Powers. Please state your name again for the record, you have three minutes.
Michelle Powers, I'm a Verdi resident. I am looking more towards findings K and M. I have more issues with fire and the safety of all of us. As you know, I'm a River Oak resident, so I will share an intersection with this development across the street from me. Let's say, I may give you an example of what could happen in Verdi that has happened. Let's say lightning strikes and hits the mountain north of this property that's going in, and evacuations of West Meadows Estates and Verdi River Oak community is mandatory. We need to get out immediately. While we share the same intersection, and with the infrastructure of Interstate 80 with US 40, there's no way to get in, no way to get out. Guess what, Commissioners? You just killed thousands, men, women, and children, pets, and the like. So finding K, health and general welfare of the people, big fail. So you need to look at the, my husband is in law enforcement, I can tell you about response times, and the chief was giving you the best conditions in the world. My husband can tell me traffic issues, the weather, he works in Tahoe, so six feet of snow can issue your response time, it can go from, you know, six minutes to 12 or 50 minutes, who knows? And that can be a matter of life and death for any of us. I've got a child who's currently sick, and I am here because this is important to me, and that as a mother is very hard for me. So I wish you, Commissioners, will listen to us and really take a look at the fire, and the fire chief is for this because he gets a fire truck. What are we getting? Traffic, we're getting less safety, we're getting basically screwed. So please, take us in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Gideon Kaplowitz? Gideon Kaplowitz?
My name is Gideon Kaplowitz. I'd like to start off by just thanking the developer and your team for being very responsive to the concerns raised by the community. I think it's very admirable. However, as Mr. Laverne so eloquently read to you, since the first time I came here to articulate concerns about resources, the other shoe has dropped, the availability of sewage. And there is this marvelous quote that, you know, the 3,800 available hookups, the remaining capacity of our sewer system, does not include the 16,000 homes that have already been approved for development that have not yet been built, many of which were approved by this council. Similar concerns were raised at the last meeting by representatives of the school district about capacity. And speaking of the school district, Commissioner Reno, in response to these concerns, you asked the rhetorical question of whether or not anyone can prove that this particular development is going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back. Now, this is a very apt metaphor, right? The resources of our city, water, sewer, schools, are very much like the humps of a camel, right? We live in a desert, and we depend on them to survive. Now, I spent a year living in West Africa, along the southern border of the Sahara Desert, and I spent time with people who depend on actual camels to sustain their way of life. And I want you to know something. They do not say things like, "Will this be the straw that breaks my camel's back?" They don't use the camel and its precious back as a metaphor for irresponsible decision-making. Most importantly, they don't take risks with their camels. They treat them as sacred beings, and there's a very good reason for this, because if you're dependent upon your camel for survival in the desert, and you break its back, it's unthinkable. So at some point, somebody in this city is going to have to stand up and say enough is enough. You're going to have to demand that we, you know, address the sustainable needs for water, for schools, for sewage, for our wildlife. Demand that we take care of these issues before we continue on this breakneck pace of accelerated expansionary development exceeding the capacity of our resources. And I've seen it in each of you tonight in dealing with the nightclub. This is a struggle, right? How do we manage this city? And I just want to encourage you guys to be the ones who stand up and say, "Let's do this responsibly," and really take a close look at these large expansionary developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplowitz. Katie Lynn Ogden?
Sorry, I didn't want to speak.
Okay, oh, okay, thank you. For the record, Katie Lynn Ogden is in opposition. Clint Borchard?
My name is Clint Borchard. I've been a Verdai resident and landowner for over 27 years now. I hope that you remember, last time we all met in this room, I got up and spoke to let you know that I went to Verdai Elementary School, kindergarten through sixth grade, along with Billingshurst Middle School and Verdai, or excuse me, McQueen High. My concerns last time were specifically addressed at future generations of children going to Verdai Elementary and not getting the quality education that I did because of overcrowding due to this, as well as other developments, not to mention Billingshurst and McQueen's overcrowding issues. I'm concerned that children aren't going to get the quality education that I would. I would like to think, and I sincerely hope, that each one of you is going to take seriously into consideration, as our city representatives, that we have the sufficient resources in place before approving this project. Our sewer plant is over capacity, you've heard it time and time again, we have no water, blah, blah, blah. The original number of units allowed for this project should be the number that goes ahead for this project. Anything greater than that would have detrimental impacts on the surrounding communities. Our small two-lane highway and roadways through town need to be considered for our community's safety before approval of this massive zoning change. Speed limits, proper signage, bridge widening, as well as something addressing the 300-plus cyclists that cruise through Verdai every single day that are going to be affected, and their safety will be affected by this amendment to this development. We may have negotiated, and I am part of the Verdai Coalition, I was in on the negotiations with this, I do respect Rob and John and everybody in there, but in all honesty, there are still a lot of concerns that need to be addressed. The initial presentation back on May 7th had massive professional reviews and feedback on what the impacts of this project may have been. The Verdai residents and the majority of the Verdai residents, and myself specifically, really want to know what those impacts are today, and we want to know what's going on in our community. It sure would be nice to know what the adjusted statistics for traffic impacts, school population impacts, as well as sewer and water capabilities are. For example, in the revised PUD that you have in Section 2E that addresses service water, it states that Tomwah can provide water service to 150 to 200 homes without further additional upstream improvements. There has been no wetlands delineation study conducted, and there is nothing in the PUD that addressed the dramatic effects on the River Oaks community directly below this development that suffers from significant damaging floods during flood events. So I hope that you've thought long and hard about this, and that you know that you're responsible for changing the face of one of the last great communities in Washoe County, and that is the reason that so many of us chose to buy property there in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Borchard. Mr. Gamreco? I'm going to guess, or Miss, Miss? Gamreco? I can't read it, I'm sorry. That is, that's the last card I have, so if there's somebody I missed, it might be you. Jean? Jean, yes. Sorry about that.
My handwriting's bad, and my wife lets me know it all the time, I'm sorry. My name is Jean Gardella, and I live in Verdai.
Mr. Gardell, please make sure to speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
My name is Jean Gardella, I live in Verdai, and I have a number of issues with this plan unit development proposal, one of them being access. This project accesses onto Highway 40. There is an additional 600 residential development above it in the Mortenson project, and there's no acknowledgement of the fact that the access to that property is right through this property. They did acknowledge that they had to go ahead and notify the people that there was a 600 residential thing, but there's no access, no demonstration of where the access is, and it is through those based on the Mortenson Plan Unit Development. They also show two other access points, or two other access points down the line, and I think it's important that you ask them or demand that they go to Endot and figure out, are we going to have roundabouts here? Are we going to have traffic stoplights here? The access from the existing residence there is where the commercial residence access will come in, and then there is access further down, closer to the east, and I will tell you, I very much question whether Endot will permit access, given the alignment of Highway 40 and the sightlines going up the hill and around the corner by the cliff there. So I think that it's imperative that you require them to go to Endot and figure out where those access points are, what kind of access is going to be developed there. The owner has proposed that there's a pocket park, there's going to be 600 new residences above, 320-some here, about 900 accesses, 900 additional residences. That roughly doubles the number of residences in the Verdai area. And to propose that they're going to have a pocket park that only serves that little development, or that development, is, I think, it's not right. These people are joining the community. The community spent money to put into the regional park and to do the trail, the bike trail, and there isn't any money to develop any park facilities for youth sports activities, youth games, and youth practices. I think they should be required to provide that to the community. They propose to have two modular classrooms onto the Verdai Elementary School. Those should be permanent additions to the school. All we're doing in building houses that are going to last 50 years is to put a modular school there that is going to last maybe 20 years, and then the school district has a problem, where do we put those kids? Finally, the commercial development. Other concerns, commercial and fire, major, major concerns, but I don't have the time to talk about it.
Thank you. Yeah, everybody gets the same time, we appreciate you respecting the time limit. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Oh, you know what? I don't think we did disclosures on this item, so I'll close public comment, and we'll go to disclosures.
Commissioner Kaufman, I've been by the site, I sat through the last hearing, I've had many, many emails on the project.
Commissioner Reno, I've, through the process, visited the site, and within the past week, I talked to the applicant representative regarding this, and emails.
Commissioner Olivas, I guess since the last disclosures, again, I've visited the site, received emails, and spoke with applicants representative, plus previous disclosures.
Mr. Stapleton, me too.
Commissioner Wieske, since our last disclosures, I have revisited the site and received many emails.
Commissioner Taylor, since our last meeting, I have visited the site, and I've corresponded with the applicant representative, and received emails and phone calls.
Commissioner Wiesley, I have visited the site through this process, as well as received emails and had discussions with the applicant representative.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. At this time, did the applicant want to use up the balance of your presentation time?
If the commission wanted to see the rest of, you know, have the same PowerPoint that I had that shows all the zoning, surrounding conditions, the open space map with the trails and so on, I can go through all of that, but otherwise, I would just be here for questions. But really, I'm not compelled to do it because it's the exact same presentation with the scaled-down intensity issues that I summarized in the sheet.
Thank you. I guess with that, we will open it up to questions. Where do we start? I will, I will lead off with a concern that maybe staff can address, that I am really struggling with the lack of information, and it's not the additional PowerPoint, it's the, I would have liked to see, I know there's changes, I would have liked to see the changed PUD, and I would have liked to see staff analysis, and I'm here, as you're presenting, going through the old staff report, trying to find, you know, the findings, and that makes it more difficult, and so I guess my question is for staff, and then maybe Mr. Kombotic, you can respond. My question is for staff, could, would, what are the rules? Could we have been given an updated version of the PUD?
I'll add to that, too. I mean, the staff report that we have in here has been, still has 493 units in there, and it's been changed a couple times since, so I'm at the same loss for information when I sat down Saturday to go through this.
The only reason I knew is because I went through and watched the city council presentation, so I'm glad everybody else is in the same boat, because I couldn't find anyone in here when I was looking at it.
Thanks. I just feel, I feel like this is a little unfair to the commission, so I guess I'm glad I'm not the only one who's thinking this. And my direct question, though, because when I met with the applicant, and I appreciate the PowerPoint, and what prevented us from receiving a copy of the updated PUD? And I'm a little disappointed, and I don't know if my disappointment is with staff or with the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, and that's a very good question. And as professional planners, we are here to provide analysis to the planning commission, and the planning commission is here to provide recommendations to the city council. Based on the timing, we have a development flow, process flow within our department. And originally, this was scheduled for our November 5th planning commission, just from a process standpoint. We were asked if we could get this on to the October 1st planning commission, which here we are today. Part of that agreement was that we would provide the staff report, the May 7th, 2014 staff report, because from a timing perspective, the analysis, there wasn't time to do the full analysis required on this. And that was clearly communicated as we moved forward, and that's what you have here today. Again, as professional planners, we want to provide that analysis to you, and with a PUD, which is a 20-year vesting document and projects that are going to be within this community for a long time, we take that seriously, and it takes time to do the review as part of that. Now, with that said, what we've been hearing is we did receive a copy of the changes. We actually forwarded a copy of the changes. Typically, what that entails is comparing the old PUD to the new PUD, and think of it as almost like environmental documents, you know, if you're doing comments on that, or if you're doing revisions to a building permit, that we need to compare the old with the new. From a timing perspective, you may know that this month, you have two planning commission meetings, and that's just based on volume. And I'm not trying to make excuses for us, I'm just trying to explain how the flow works. As someone submits a project, we have statutory requirements. I guess in hindsight, you know, I'll take this on myself, I could have asked other applicants if they could have deferred some time to make time for this project, and, you know, we'll go ahead and take that on us. But what we'd like to say is, for tonight, the analysis, the original analysis, was done on a higher density, more intensity of uses. So from a staff analysis standpoint, there are certain aspects that would require more of analysis and some less of analysis. For example, the water use on these residential units, which come through a process, if staff's analysis originally was in agreement with, let's say, 10 units, and now it's 6 units, well then, you know, we would still recommend approval on that. I think there were some issues out there that we wanted to double-check from an analysis standpoint, such as the pocket park, about who funds the pocket park and who maintains this pocket park, have discussions with the school district about some of the issues they've brought up regarding overcrowding. The way I understand it is that, for instance, McQueen is overcrowded, McQueen High School, and it's overcrowded if nothing is approved. It's still overcrowded. So it's still an issue, just regardless of the project goes forward or doesn't go forward. It's kind of a bigger regional school district issue. Regarding the sewer, just to be clear, I know that that's come up, but we have plans in place to address our sewer. There's nothing imminent, but it's a wake-up call that these things need to be fixed, and need to be fixed quickly. And so we're moving forward with that. And so I know this is a long answer to pretty much a complicated question, but in a perfect world, this would be an analysis before you in November.
Fred?
Wait.
Commissioner Kaufman? Commissioner Kaufman. I've been sitting on the planning commission for eight years. I've never had something like this put before me. Number one, we don't have any proposals of what motions. I mean, again, after sitting on this commission for eight years, I, you know, I almost don't know where to start. And when you have newer people, what do you expect? I mean.
As the newest member, I honestly, I had, I didn't know what I was voting on. I asked Claudia, what, what is this? And trying to do the research. So just to clarify, because in the previous reports, staff recommended approval. Now it's lesser density, and they've done some mitigations, staff would still recommend approval. Is that the analysis?
The agreement we made with the applicant, Fred Turnier, Community Development Director, the agreement we made with the applicant to bring it to the October 1st planning commission meeting, was that staff was unable to get the full analysis complete, and that we would provide the staff report dated May 7, 2014, which is a staff report based on the original proposal of the PUD, and that staff recommendation is for approval. So the way we looked at this, this is a continuation of the May 7, 2014 meeting.
So are the, Commissioner Kaufman, are the proposed motions the same?
The proposed motion from staff is for approval. In fact, it's on page 70 of your staff report.
60.
60, sorry, 60. Based upon compliance with applicable considerations, applicable findings, I move to recommend to the city council approval of the zoning map amendment by ordinance and modify the PUD to exclude the 10 acres of commercial land uses subject to the approval of the project of regional significance by the regional planning commission and condition A. Now, was incumbent upon the applicant that if there's any changes, that those changes or recommendations for changes, a proposal, that would be brought forward to the planning commission tonight. And just to answer your question, Commissioner Kaufman, this is the first time I've, I've seen a staff report that was so short brought forward. And, and it has my name on it.
It sounds like we're all in sort of a bad position, because I feel like there's an unfair position for us to be in. Commissioners, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
I don't know. Just to echo a comment and not to pile on, I think everybody's got some fault here for the condition this is in. Fred had said it takes time to do review and double-check analysis, yet it's supposed to be dumped on us and we're supposed to make a decision tonight? We don't get time to review and do an analysis? I guess that's kind of my basic feeling of this whole thing here tonight.
Fred Turnier, Community Development Director, I just want to emphasize that tonight you have, you have a recommendation for approval, but you have essentially three options. You can approve as modified, you can deny, or you can continue.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reno.
Go ahead.
I had a concern when I was reading through it, I, I was watching the city council meeting, and I actually picked up the phone and called Mr. Campodic and said, I thought it was 324 units was what was agreed to, or 25. I couldn't remember the exact number. And now, given this, I mean, even, even the motion that we had before, it says 10 acres, but it's really been reduced to four acres. And so I would be in support of continuing this and getting a proper analysis of, of the, the entire package. Thanks.
Is that a motion?
Well, no, that's just my thought.
Okay, sorry. Nathan?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, just one, one clarification. The material that you had in your staff report is the original staff report. This item was, was heard in May. It was also heard in, in July with additional documentation provided by the applicant and analysis by staff of information at that time. So that's the information in, in your packet. The last hearing, the commission was ready to take a vote. The technical denial of the master plan precluded that. So this is the same place that it left off at the last public hearing. The distinction is what, what the applicant, the changes that the applicant is presenting this evening.
Okay. I'll, I will give the applicant an opportunity unless one of the other commissioners wants to jump in first.
I, I have a question for John. So John, why did we rush this? I mean, if it was in November, you know, what's a rush?
There wasn't a rush, you know, rush. Fair question. But we, I submitted, if, could you flip to the, this, okay? And just so y'all know, what Fred said is correct, that we were going to summarize the changes. Those are the sum changes of the PUD in that one slide. That's everything that has changed, and it's all related to density reduction and intensity reduction. So the rationale, which both Fred and Nate described, was that if we approved, certainly don't want to put words in our mouth, they approved it at four to the acre and everything that went with it, and presumably, three to the acre, and the reduction of commercial and everything went with that would be acceptable. It was to the community, so that's where we thought it would not be. So my one slide was the sum changes of all the changes in the PUD. This was submitted, you know what, nobody's here to pick on staff or beat up on staff. I don't know why. Here's the PUD, the draft PUD, that has all those changes on 8-18, that's six weeks ago. They're busy. They got two planners. So we thought that we sort of had a handshake deal. Me, as the applicant's rep, summarized this in the one slide I opened with, and we thought it might be acceptable. There is a little bit of vagueness, if you will, on the pocket park issue, because that's new. And we just said, hey, it's going to be a private park. We have our landscape architect, I've already met with a landscape architect. We will size the park and amenitize the park and deal with private construction and maintenance of it. And then I saw something today about, my personal opinion was be okay if we put a public use easement in there. There probably won't be any further analysis, frankly. But if, you know, there was, there's no shortchanging the process here. And that was the rationale.
If I, if I can just jump in, even per your handshake deal with staff.
Yeah.
Is there some reason why you couldn't have just mailed us copies of the PUD or handed us copies of the PUD? Is that like against the rules?
I've never done that before. I don't, I go through staff. This was submitted to staff on 8-18 with all of those changes. It got pushed behind other projects that were in the pipeline? I don't know. And like I said, I interviewed a guy that's a planner today that's seeking employment, and he goes, you know, I talked to people at the city, there's two planners. He said, that's amazing. And it is amazing. It's the way things are. So I, you know, you got to call on Fred and Claudia and whomever else on the staff resource issue. But there's no rushing anything here. We've been at this for one year this month, one year. And that's a fact. What you see here is sent to Nate on 8-18.
I would disagree with that from our perspective, in that there's not rushing anything, yet we just first thought that summary tonight. Maybe that's not rushing something in everybody else's book, but when I sat down to look at it on Saturday, that wasn't there.
Okay.
Other comments? Commissioner Taylor?
Well, I guess I just, in watching the city council meeting and looking at this, I don't want to discourage the applicant, because I think you guys are making progress. And I even sent a message saying, I really appreciate what you're doing, but I, I still have concerns in that, you know, of course, I didn't vote for it last time.
Right.
So I would have concerns on what you put up there again, and I don't think I have an opportunity to really talk about them. And there were commissioners missing from that meeting. That's why it got technically denied, that you didn't have the opportunity to see the presentation that you gave.
The presentation at, at city council?
No, the planning commission.
The planning commission last time, okay, yeah. Would it help just to give you a little more background on the, going through the PowerPoint? And it sounds like.
Let me just get the, we'll see, would you guys like that? Would you like more information? What's the, what would you guys like to do?
Does any information matter? Are we going to vote on it tonight, or?
You guys heard the options. We can approve with changes if we're clear on the changes, and if we decide that, we can deny, or we can continue.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieske. I was one of the commissioners who was here the first evening, and we didn't vote on the PUD. We, we voted on the master plan. That's what the technical denial was. There are changes that were brought forward tonight, and understanding the explanation from Fred and from staff to the reduction in the numbers, and if the entities that were represented before, for those of us that were here, stated there was capacity in the sewer system, there was water available, there was a traffic report, and the numbers have reduced, I understand what staff and the applicant were doing. I don't like it any more than you do. I'm, I'm a, I'm a planning commissioner, and I take this job seriously, just like all six of you do. We spend our personal time, our weekends, reviewing these and doing comparisons and taking notes, and calling applicant representatives up, calling staff members up, and asking questions before we get here at a planning commission meeting. And we get a, a great document thrown up on the screen tonight that probably, at least for me, would have made some, some great clarifications on some issues that we discussed before, that, you know, give me 20 minutes, 30 minutes right now of reviewing them and listening to the discussion, and I'm supposed to make a $10 million decision. For that, I'm, I'm a little disappointed, but at the same time, because I was fortunate enough to be here in May, I, I can go through and do the analysis on these things as we're going through this portion of our hearing. For those of you that weren't, I honestly think that, you know, you should be getting an additional education. You should be listening to what was said before, and, and if you can't do it tonight, then, you know, that's your decision on how you move forward and how you vote.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat with Commissioner Wieske. I mean, I've been to all the meetings, and I can look at this analysis and not necessarily have issues with everything, but I just think that, you know, we don't even have the exact wording for the motion or the analysis of what these little changes might do. Not that I'm saying I'm opposed to them, but I'm just saying it's, as a commissioner, I'd like to see that and read it. And that's why I picked up the phone saying, wait, I thought there was 324 units. And not seeing that in my packet, it worries me a little bit. So I'm not saying that I'm generally opposed to this, but I'm opposed to kind of the process that's been presented to us tonight.
So what would the commission like to do? Would you like to hear more, discuss more, motion?
Madam Chairman, I, I have a question for Fred or Nate.
Yep.
Okay, the P, the PUD application. So if, if we, if we pass this tonight, they still come through, come back to the planning commission for what? What's, once we do the PUD application, they come back with the maps?
Fred Turnier, Community Development Director, if it's approved tonight, it goes to city council. If the city council approves it, then it could come in for, and regional, then, or not regional, you could come in with a tentative map, and then that's a special use permit, which the planning commission would see that.
We still see that, right?
You would still see that. They're, they're still within the PUD, there are still discretionary triggers within the PUD.
Okay.
Commissioner Kaufman, can I piggyback a question, Commissioner Wieske? Fred, tonight, according to the original motion that was provided for us to use, should we agree with staff, it's a move to recommend that city council approve it. We are not approving it. Alls we would be doing was moving it forward with a recommendation of approval or denial to city council. City council will make the final decision on this, not us. Correct?
Fred Turnier, Community Development Director, that is correct. You're recommending body for the PUD.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify and make sure that I understood it right, because that's what my intentions were coming into the meeting tonight, was an approval or denial to city council. So it's, it's, it's not us this evening that's the final decision, or, or that would even be appealed upon decision.
Fred Turnier, Community Development Director, again, if you made an approval with modifications, that recommendation would go to city council. If you did a denial, that would be a recommendation to the city council. If you did a continuation, you would just hear it again in the future.
I will just weigh in as one who was not here at the last meeting, and also someone who initially wasn't supportive, and a lot of my concerns have been addressed in my meeting with the applicant representative, but there are things that for me, I did want more analysis on before I could decide if this got me to where I needed to be, and that included things like the schools, and, you know, there were things in the PUD that I saw, but I really had wanted to chew that over and be able to see it. And I'm disappointed with that answer of both staff and the applicant, because nobody gave me a straight answer. Why couldn't somebody have just mailed us the PUD? You know, and it's okay, I, it's okay.
Can I please? I've never once bypassed staff, ever, not one time, in my 19 years. It's inappropriate for me to do that, Madam Chair.
And I'm not suggesting that you do something, should have done something inappropriate. That's not what I'm suggesting. It's clear that there's communication, it's clear that it's a mess, and I don't know why, I don't know the whole backstory, but that was just me weighing in on that I would really feel comfortable with more analysis. I'm more comfortable than I was, definitely. So I don't know. I would be supportive of continuing. I don't know if that might even help the applicant out, because this is sort of becoming a contentious, you know, discussion. But if other commissioners want to go ahead and hear more and try to really chew on this over the next hour or so, you know, let's do that. But what do you guys want to do?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I agree with Commissioner Wieske. You know, number one, five of us have already heard what this is. We all, we also know that they've reduced part, you know, from 4.6, John? Was it before to 3.1 per acre? They've, so I think we should try to discuss and make a decision and not postpone it, but go on for tonight. And if, if everybody would like a copy of what's up on the board, which might make it easier, it's even for me to read through this, it's harder for me to read through it up on the board than if I had it in front of me. So I would say, take two or three minutes and let Michelle make copies for us, so, so we have copies in front of us, and then we sit and discuss it.
Do you guys like to take a five-minute break, and we will ramp up and have a discussion on this project? Is that the flavor of the commission? Is that what everyone would like to do?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay, we'll take five minutes.
Okay, Michelle.
The meeting back, want to call the meeting, hello? Can you guys hear me?
Am I muted?
Oh, hi. Hi. Now that's really loud. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We have received the summary of changes. We've received a copy of it. And does everyone want to take a minute to review this? You want to take one more minute and make sure, has everyone had a chance to really look at it and see what, what the changes are? I still see people.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wieske, I'd like a couple of more minutes, because I want to compare this. to compare this to attachment one from KLS Planning and Design dated July 9th, because I think there's some differences in these documents of what may have been proposed earlier.
Okay, thank you.
I'd prefer a few minutes, more minutes, please.
We're not going to go anywhere, but we're going to study this a little bit so that we have an opportunity to try to make a good decision with the most information that we can get tonight. Everybody ready? Want another minute or two? Okay. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. What I'm going to do first, since everybody's had a chance to look at this and compare this, to look at the one-page outline of the changes that we just got and compare it to the staff report that has the old PUD. I'm still having a hard time knowing whether I'm going to have all the information that I need, and I just want to go down the line and see what everybody wants to do. If you want to take the option to continue this, if you feel like you're going to have enough information, or whether you want to.
I have enough information.
To go ahead and hear this with, over the next hour, we have till 11:15 minutes.
I have enough information, I think. I'm going to ask some questions.
Commissioner Reno, after reviewing this, I think I do have enough information to make an informed decision tonight.
Commissioner Olivas, I believe I have enough information tonight, too, based on past. If somebody's needed to continue, I could go along with that, but I have enough for myself.
Okay, I have some challenges. I'm looking at the old PUD, and there's things that even in there, without going through line by line, that don't, aren't going to match up. One example is a motel is a prohibited use in there, and without seeing the new PUD, there's little changes like that that we're not going to be able to know about. I'm not comfortable, but I also wasn't at the last meeting, so. Commissioner Wiskey?
Commissioner Wiskey, I have enough information before me to ask some additional questions and should probably be able to make a vote tonight.
Commissioner Taylor, I think I have enough information. I still have concerns and discrepancies in the PUD that I have in front of me, and I have some questions, too.
Commissioner Rusley, I have the same feeling that I believe I have enough information, but only as of 10 minutes ago.
Okay.
Do I have enough information? And through the questioning process, I might be able to get to where I can make a vote, but, you know, until we get to that point, I'm not sure.
Okay, then what I want to do first is ask staff to outline for us in the staff report exactly where the findings are that we're working with, just so that every, all the commissioners are clear on what the findings are that we are. And Claudia?
Sure, if you look on page, sorry, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Housing Manager, if you look on page 71 of the staff report dated May 7th, sorry, starting quarter of the way up on findings, are the findings for PUD. On page 72, it goes into the NRS findings, and then on page 73, you have the zoning map amendment findings. And that continues over to page 74 of the May 7th staff report.
Okay, so is everybody clear of the findings that we're working with? Any questions for Claudia on that? We're looking at page 71 to 74, right?
Correct, 71 through 74 are the findings.
On the old staff report?
You don't need to look at the master plan considerations, but just starting where it says findings towards the bottom of page 71.
All right, is everybody clear? Okay, so now what I'd like to do is, I would like to have John come up and finish his presentation, and I would like you to go through anything additional you think you would like us to know. Then I would like to have Carly come up, if you would. Carly? Hold on, you have to ask it at the microphone, so. Is Carly the, okay, and then I would like to have Carly come up. To start John off, though, Commissioner Kaufman, do you want to lead off with a question? And then if you could go into your presentation, John, that would be great.
Oh, I thought this gentleman was going to have a question.
No, no.
Okay.
We're going to.
Thank you.
We're going to defer to Carly.
John, I think when, once we got this, that helped everybody out. But the other thing is, I'd like to go through page 60 of the report, the staff report, which is the planning commission meeting, May 7th, 2014.
Can you go and copy that for me? I don't have that with me. Okay.
Okay, start off with section one. It goes, master plan amendment to change designation from single-family residential on 100, now it's 104.6.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, that's.
Point of order, that's already been approved by city council. We're not even looking at.
Okay, you're, okay. I just want to make sure this is, we're getting the same numbers. So, because part of this is a special planning area of 79 acres, none of that changes?
I think the question is that section one of the proposal, section two, I'm sorry, that's what we're looking at, right? And do you want to elaborate on that a little bit of exactly, is that two the same?
Well, I just want to know if the numbers change.
I tell you what I could do is go to a slide here that's into the PowerPoint that will kind of sum that up, which is right here. So, you know, the SPA is approved, right? As one of the commissioners stated, and number one goes away. The also, Commissioner Kaufman, the reference to projects of regional significance, that goes away, that paragraph, right? Because we're below that threshold, so we're dealing with just that zoning part. And the sum is 104 acres now, at 3.1 to the acre, four acres of NC. I've summarized the reduction of uses in the commercial area, and then the 90.5 acres of open space. That is the land use portion. The uses we can get into on the table if you want, but I talked about the reduction of the uses. Does that make sense, Commissioner Kaufman?
Well, where's the 78, 78.1 acres of L L?
That was from, so that's staff, that, right, that's from 78, the existing zoning. That's what they were saying.
And what is it now?
It's the blend that they have in there, which would not change with this proposal. It's just what we're going to, yeah.
And is it still SF-15?
Yeah, there's, so there's a blend of L L R 1, UT 40, and SF-15, and then some open space. So, the part that would change is the second half of that paragraph, right? The 98.6 now becomes 104, and then 390, 493 is 324. And then gross density of 3.1, and then four acres of commercial, actually be inserted neighborhood commercial.
Yeah, okay.
And then maximum square footage is represented in the PUD, of course. It all just falls out.
So, does that stay the same, the maximum square footage?
No, it goes down, because it's the same .25 FAR at four acres. So, what that would be, what's that math? That's 43,560, right? One, so instead of 100,000 square feet, it would be a maximum of 43,560.
43,5?
43,560, 43,560.
And the open space is still the same?
The open space is the same, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Kaufman, are you clear?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, and if you could just go into your presentation, we'll start the clock again. Thanks, John.
Thank you, thank you. And I do, I apologize to all of you about my frustration. We'll leave it at that, but it's just kind of difficult at times. Let me go through. So, of course, there's our site, River Oak is that little community pocket across the street. They are 10 to the acres, we've discussed. Really, the point of these maps is to show surrounding conditions and really the assurance of compatibility. So, there is now the existing master plan, special planning area. What's important that we could all take from this is that you look at Mortenson-Garson, this property, and then a lot of it to the south is all special planning area. Of course, PUD is the must-go with that designation of SPA. So, there's the existing again in summary. You see it's actual fairly precise blobs, if you will. It's not common in planning, but we, because we've had so much scrutiny in this, they are precise to the tenth of an acre. There's surrounding zoning, we're getting into the compatibility issues now. You've got SF-6, which allows seven per acre in the Mortenson property. That's on the developer, developable acreage. I don't know what the gross would be, but SF-6 is the equivalent of seven. And you see ours is 3.1, is noted in the biggest blob there of 69 point something acres. There's a little more surrounding conditions. LDU, I point to that pocket across the street, that is actually urban residential in the county. And people like to claim there, and we've shown a lot of respect to the Verdi community. They think they're in rural, but that's actually an urban designation in the county at 10 dwellings to the acre. I think it's built at six or seven to the acre. And then, of course, MF-14 next to it and SF-6. And then the other thing that folds in is the employment across the river, also county designation, which is industrial, and we all know that, that's fully built out. Then that's more of the city zoning going across Verdi Road, which shows the blend of, you know, kind of the boomtown area and what was zoned with that property, but you've got a mix of some commercial, AC, hotel, casino, and MF, and then there's that big single-family piece on the flat part adjacent to the freeway. There's, once again, my summary map, so all that really changes is the same development area. We took 10 acres of commercial, reduced it to four, and then added the six acres into the single-family area. There is an idea of one project that is something that we laid out, a blend of lot sizes. You see the commercial in there, the open space, the drainage ways. Just gives you an idea of one way to approach this in more design detail, certainly not part of the PUD, but I wanted to give you some idea of what 324 units could look like on this property. There is the open space and trails. I think what's important for all of us here, a lot of negotiation with the community and staff, the red lines representing a public trail network, the trailhead parking on the east that would be improved by the applicant, the fisherman access parking. And again, I always feel like when you look at big picture and planning, you look at what a site gives you and what opportunity there is there. And the magic of this property is, I think, the setting in Verdi and then the, actually peavine in the back has, puts forth a beautiful setting, and then, of course, next to the river. So, we purposely avoided a city type of a park when we have the opportunity for trails that stub into the properties to the north, and then, of course, a connection to the river. Also, I'd like to point out, one of the reasons we did not do, this is a much more macro issue, but very germane, is the approved neighborhood park is right across the property line in the Mortenson-Garson handbook. And so, if that were to come forward and developed, we would have a city park that serves plenty of capacity to do, deal with all of this development in the immediate area. area. That city sphere line, just to show how far the city really does wrap around to the south and to the west, and then their zoning in a macro level as well. Somerset's kind of the beige piece to the east, and then Mortenson, of course, is adjacent. So that's, that's all I have. So I'd certainly be ready for any questions. I would like to, a couple of you, I believe, touched on schools, and, you know, the school district has talked about their numbers. The numbers are scaled down to about, well, I talked to the principal at Verdi Elementary School, just like I did in preparation for the city council meeting today, and there's about a hundred and twenty-five slots at Verdi today that are vacant. That's based on their enrollment and their baseline capacity. The projections for elementary are down to, for this project at buildout, are about seventy-nine students, just for some way of basis of comparison. And I could get into the middle school and the high school as well, if you wanted to talk about that. I also have some thoughts about some of the issues that some of the people brought up on sewer capacity and the whole issue of the plant. I think if you want to talk about that, it's important that we do, that we're not going to hit a wall on that, and anything else that goes in the macro stuff, such as arterial road capacity, plant sewer capacity, and schools. So, thank you.
Okay, John, thank you, and I'm sure we'll address sewer capacity a little later in the discussion. I want to go now and ask Carly to come up and give her a couple minutes. It's my understanding that she's the representative of the community folks out in Verdi. So, could you sort of give us a summary of where you guys are at, and some of these negotiations that the applicants talked to us about?
You bet. Carly Borchardt for the record, and I just want to thank you. I know this is out of order, so thank you for letting me speak for just a moment.
If we ask you to come up, you're not out of order, so you're good.
Okay. Basically, what I did was, I got very concerned from the May seventh meeting, what's being presented basically on paper to you guys tonight outside of this negotiation. So, I developed the Verdi Assistance League, and actually had over a hundred people here at the next planning commission. So, it really got a lot of heads turned, and a lot of our community was concerned. So, the developer and his representative were nice enough to reach out to us, and we got together as a group. And I just want to be able to say that what is being presented as the alternative tonight, the PowerPoint, as you're calling it, is actually what we discussed. And I just want to make sure that it's on the record, that that's what's being approved and going forward to, as recommended, because basically, as representing the community, I've assured everybody that this is what was going to be presented to you and analyzed by you tonight.
Just to follow up, to make sure we get the full picture, this, the one slide that John is showing us, with the changes, that's something that your group all voted to, that you're comfortable with?
That's what the group negotiated.
Okay, so in negotiating, you're representing that they are okay with that? Okay, do you have anything else you want to talk to us?
I don't think so. I just, like I said, I wanted to make sure that what is being discussed, that it's not just approved and the four ninety-three goes forward, that we're making sure that it's on record, that these negotiated changes are what's being presented to council if it gets approved.
Okay, well, we definitely appreciate your work on representing all the folks out there.
One last question from Jean, actually, I'm just going to slip it in here for him. He's wondering if we can get a copy of that as well?
Oh, of the copy?
The PowerPoint for...
If we have another, yeah. Okay. So, Commissioners, while she's up here, let's ask Carly questions, and then we'll call John back up, and then I think we probably have some questions for Mr. Mann from Parks, and also for schools, for Mr. Buster. I guess we can go how the questions come up, so. But let's let Carly ask.
Ask, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, let's ask Carly any questions that we've got for her.
Commissioner Lewis, I have a brief question, and I appreciate what you've done, kind of pulling together the community. But just to clarify, you're not speaking on behalf of every resident out there?
I am not, no.
Okay, there are others and different opinions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
While you are a strong voice, that's, just so we know what we're listening to.
Absolutely, thank you for pointing that out.
Hey, does anybody have any other questions for Carly? Okay, so I guess, Commissioners, what's your preference? What questions do you want to ask first, and who would you like to call up?
Madam Chair, I'll start. I've got questions for the applicant, please. Thanks, Carly.
John, as I mentioned a few minutes ago regarding your, the handout that, I guess, was presented to Reno City Council on eight twenty-seven, which was West Meadows P U D, that's, you had it up on the screen earlier?
Right.
And then you have another document on your letterhead, that's attachment one dated July ninth, two thousand and fourteen. One of the items on there is paragraph D, fencing and screening, it's now not on this document?
That was already built into the P U D.
Is it, is it, again, John, work with us, because we don't have the revised P U D, so we don't know.
Okay. Which number was that?
If you need a copy of it, I'll give you, share mine with you.
I've got it. I was going to point to you, I'd like to share with the... Here you go. Could I get to the, excuse me, ladies, Michelle? Could you change to the other screen? Notice that it's, wood is stricken, open view wood, and wood there are stricken, so that is subsequent to that memo.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
On your handout tonight? The last, not bullet, but dash mark starts off, twelve single-family units allowed if built in lieu of neighborhood commercial. Would you just explain that, please?
All we're seeing is, you know, if the commercial went away completely, then what would it be? We wanted to entitle it for something, and there's some flexibility, so one would be the fourplex multifamily. In this case, there's single-family at three to the acre for four acres, twelve units.
Okay.
Or, and then those neighborhood commercial uses, that's the flexibility.
Okay, so how does, so that would change your overall count of three twenty-four?
To three thirty-six. That's also in this P U D. If that went away. Right, if that were to be converted to...
That's not the way I read this.
Okay.
If a judge asked me in three years from now, what I voted on, I would tell him that I voted on a maximum of three hundred and twenty-four dwelling units, not three hundred and thirty-six.
Fair enough.
So, I mean, if it's in the P U D, then, you know, show me, show us where it is.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think it's three twenty-four max, no matter where you put them.
Traffic P U D, right here. Says three twenty-four with four acres of commercial, or three thirty-six in lieu of the commercial.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
That's what I was looking for.
No, I appreciate your questions.
The, the only other question I have is the pocket park. Have you and Mr. Mann discussed and agreed to a size and amenities of such a park, or is it just that there will be something in the future, and you will both agree on it? And would that be brought before the planning commission? Would it be brought before city council for final approval, or staff?
It would be, it would be in the tentative map, right? Because we say it's going to be central to the neighborhood, the bulk of the neighborhood, which would be the big single-family blob. And then we would, the developer would construct it and maintain it in the HOA, and we would focus on amenities for that community, not to be a big city park.
Okay, so, we're talking about one pocket park?
One pocket park, that's right.
But you have three different building pods, if you will, neighborhoods?
Right.
I guess is a better term to use, three neighborhoods. The developer will pick one neighborhood to be the lucky member to receive a pocket park?
The pocket park, yeah. Could we go back to the PowerPoint, Michelle? See this right here? I'm pointing to...
I can see it now.
You can see it in the middle of the fat part of the project, yeah.
The middle of the big one.
Yeah. You know, good pedestrian connection, go in all directions, that's the idea.
Okay. One last question for you, John. If the NC goes away and the additional twelve units are built, is that, how does that change traffic counts? How does it change sewer flow? How does it change water usage? Has that been considered?
The biggest one is traffic, because you've got the A, B, C, D thing, right? The rest, we demonstrated capacity on all the other things, all the impact analysis, right? So the biggest one was traffic. I talked to Ken Crater about it. He said it's still that one level of service at buildout, that it goes from B to C with the additional background traffic.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further, I have further questions, but they'll probably be asked by others.
I'm going to just follow up on the Parks question, and have Mr. Mann come up, if you would, and address the Parks. Can you fill in anything that he missed on the Parks? I guess specifically, the park would not be maintained by the city. In that case, what oversight or input does the city have in the park?
For the record, Jeff Mann, Parks Recreation and Community Services. We received textual changes to the P U D last Thursday, and we applaud the developer for adding a pocket park, and for agreeing to have the homeowners association maintain it. Our primary concern, as proposed, is that the developer has asked for credits of residential construction tax in an amount equal to the total cost for design and construction of the park, period. As proposed, there's no, there's no city Parks Department oversight in the design, construction, or budgeting for this pocket park. And that does concern us, because it's being funded, as proposed, through residential construction tax, which are public tax dollars. So we would like to see a change, and treat it just like every other planned unit development, where we've, where we have a pocket park, where we have a park using residential construction tax, and direct that the city and the applicant will enter into a park development agreement prior to the first tentative map, to be approved by city council. And we address all those issues as part of the park development agreement.
And that funding, is that language for that funding mechanism and that oversight or lack thereof in the new P U D?
That's what's being requested in the new P U D, according to the language that I have.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? There's new language for the park in addition to this that's going into the P U D?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, for clarification. Your staff report includes all information to date, including memorandums that were proposed changes up until the July planning commission meeting. What you're looking at today is broad-based concepts with what the applicant had submitted that we all have, okay? For the most part, implementing these is simply, it's just a matter of technically going through the document and inserting, making sure that what's, you know, how it affects page seven affects page seventeen. It's more technical. Condition of approval A allows the commission to make those, you know, to approve it based on the concepts outlined here. The only, the only issue is, would be parks, because while they can identify a, you know, the want and desire to have a pocket park, implementing it in a technical document with legally binding language takes some time and analysis. Planning commission can defer that to the city council. Condition of approval A allows the planning commission to modify the proposal, as well as the city council. So, if the commission is comfortable with the concept of a pocket park, that's something that specific language could be directed towards council.
Do you want to follow up on that?
I guess it's a broader question, but how, what's our assurance that everything that we're hearing, in addition to this, gets addressed in the new P U D? What, I feel uncomfortable voting tonight on something that could come back, that, I mean, I don't know if I'm being clear, but it sounds like there's a lot more than just these five bullet points that's going to be in the P U D. How do we know that it's going to get in there, and that we're addressing everybody's concerns?
Nathan Gilbert, you could, you could direct that these, well, for one, you would need, because no motion was ever made, even though this case has been heard two times, and memos have been, you know, let's modify it, let's modify it, nothing has ever been adopted from that point. So, if this were to move forward in a positive direction, to be referred to council, the recommendation would be to include condition A, to include all modifications as outlined in your staff report, with all of the information that you have received this evening. In addition, you may wish to incorporate the changes that the applicant has proposed here. Those would be incorporated, and with the direction to incorporate them in the document and forward them to council.
Commissioner Wieske. Nathan, just to piggyback on that, then, while Commissioner Taylor is frantically writing some notes, at the same time, the verbiage that we've just heard Mr. Mann discuss for the Parks agreement, we could add into that as an additional condition for city council to review upon receiving our recommendation tonight.
Correct. And even if city council didn't agree with, the city council has the opportunity to completely change whatever's proposed. But if this council, if this commission would like to give council clear and present direction to do that?
Right.
That's within this body's purview.
Okay, and that's part of what we should be looking at as a consideration when making recommendations to city council for final approval or denial.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to weigh in on this one. This past exchange is a perfect example of why I really do not feel comfortable deliberating on this, and I'm sort of getting more and more disappointed in this process, and in that we are even having this discussion. That's something that I would have wanted to read in the P U D, and I would have been able to ask, and had I not, had we not, you know, asked the right question to Mr. Mann, we wouldn't have gotten that information, and I think that was really important. So, I'm really disappointed in the process, and in the fact that we're having this discussion without this information. So, I'm at the point where, because I know we've decided not to continue this, I'm pretty sure how I'm going to vote on this, not on the merits, but on the fact that I just don't have the information that I would like. So, I'm just letting you all know where I'm at going forward on this discussion. Other questions regarding Parks?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Reno? Just a quick question about the seismance, the last bullet item on here, Mr. Krampotic. Can you explain that to me? Is there a location, or is it going to be determined?
Oh, you're talking about the wildland access?
Yeah, the wildland access.
Yeah, that would, that would be determined, you know? You could probably get a good sense with your background of that land plan that I have, and how we could spine off of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. Thanks.
Follow-up questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Don't sit down yet, Mr. Krampotic. Since nobody else is asking questions, I'll jump in and see if I can get my last few questions asked. We did have this... We did have this discussion back in May, and we also had it in June or July, whenever our, our July meeting, I guess. Traffic and NDOT. At what point do, does NDOT get involved in traffic analysis? I believe that we discussed signalization or around about.
Yeah, somebody just invented the roundabout. That came from the, there's, we've never had any intention to do roundabout. It's never been mentioned by the applicant. What we do have is a trigger for traffic study when they bring in the tentative map.
Okay.
And that's what's going to quantify impacts on a more detailed level, maybe an axel lane or a decel lane, those types of things, right?
Okay, so at the tentative map level.
Yeah.
Not at this level, at the tentative map level. Then NDOT will do a more in-depth review and provide recommendations or requirements? Bill, thank you.
For the record, Bill Goss, Senior Civil Engineer. To be clear, NDOT has received the original traffic study that was presented in their original packet with the 500 homes and the full, and the large industrial. They received it, reviewed it. Basically, that was a very planning-level study, basically looked at volumes on the route segments themselves. At that level, they had no concerns. They felt that US-40 could service the additional capacity, had the capacity to service the lanes. As far as specific design, each study, each connection to US-40, each proposed roadway would have to provide an additional traffic study. It would come typically with a tentative map that would propose that connection. And each one of those studies would have to be approved, and NDOT would identify what improvements would need to be made on US-40 and at those intersections to meet their criteria as well as the cities.
Okay. So will NDOT consider the total number of buildout at the first tentative map, even if the first tentative map only shows 50 homes, as far as setbacks and decel lanes, turnout lanes, whatever may be required, to ensure that there is, there is property allocated for them at full buildout? How does that work?
On US-40 itself, there's a lot of right-of-way width right there, right now.
Okay.
They have the width necessary for, without requiring additional right-of-way width for any of the proposed improvements or necessary improvements on US-40 itself. Yes, as far as the intersection design, it would have to include ultimate buildout analysis.
Okay. And before you sit down, I don't know if anybody else wants to jump on the traffic, but then I want to go to sewer, so I'll let somebody else take over for a minute.
Commissioner Reno, yeah, I was going to ask you about the sewer. Can you explain the concerns with the capacity at the sewer plant? They said 3,800. I think I read that newspaper article, and 16,000 single-family units that are planned, and how this would affect it. And I know that the Verdi interceptor is below capacity as it is now, I mean, as far as, it can take it.
Yeah, let's, and we'll start basically at the site. We do have the Verdi lot and interceptor. It has very little flow in it now. It has tremendous capacity to accept additional flow from development in this area. It was proposed out there for future buildout. So as far as interceptor capacity, there really is no issue. Currently, there is a nitrogen TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load Standard, that the, that our Tommorf plant is not meeting or did not meet in 2013. They come to the realization with the city and their sewer near the end of 2013. They're doing some modifications to the plant right now. They're changing some of the, some of their processes. They're monitoring it on a daily basis. They're, the TMDL are under that TMDL for 2014. They propose to stay under that TMDL. And the city has proposed, has plans in place in developments to make modifications to the Truckee Meadows Regional Water Facility to make the necessary improvements, whether it be additional, what was it? As far as, I'm not clear on all the improvements, except there's some new improvements and there's additional, as far as reclaimed water. That's one of the abilities, is to improve the use of reclaimed water by potentially building ponds to store reclaimed water through the winter months when they're not using it, so that they can reduce that TMDL. The sewer plant itself has significant capacity. It's simply the nitrogen level and the nitrogen TMDL that they're having difficulty attaining. They have plans in place and will build infrastructure necessary to meet and continue to meet that TMDL.
Okay. So let me interrupt you there just for a second. So it's my understanding that they have issues with the nitrates over the whole year and how it's loaded into the Truckee River, correct? And they didn't meet that discharge permit capacity? And that's kind of that number that's being put out there, that we don't have capacity because of the nitrate levels. But you're saying as a sewer plant itself, it could take a lot more loading as long as something is done to mitigate the nitrates? Is that correct?
That is correct. And, you know, part of building that additional infrastructure is the need for additional sewer impact fees. Additional development will help pay those fees to help accelerate some of that, some of that infrastructure that needs to be done.
Right, and that's a regional plan to put that out.
It is a regional, yes.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question about traffic?
Go ahead.
I just have a high-level question, and I'm really pulling for you guys here. On the, the PUD has some traffic studies in there that were done based on numbers that have now changed. Some are lower, some are higher. All I want to know is, when we get a tentative map, when we start doing traffic studies, the numbers that are going to be used aren't going to be based on 13.1 acres of commercial, a minimum square, 6,000 square foot minimum lot size, that they're going to be consistent with what the developer's proposing, right?
At the first tentative map, they're going to have to do an overall traffic study with whatever units and commercial area is approved for the PUD.
Okay, so these traffic studies that we're looking at in the PUD that we have, that people made decisions based on, will include the correct information?
The new studies will include the correct information.
Thank you, Bill. Other questions right now? Commissioner Wiskey?
Yes, I'd like to follow up on the sewer questions. If the nitrates levels do not become under control at that point, is there then a greater step taken to reduce, I think you called them connections or?
Yeah, service connections.
Service connections at that point until that is resolved?
At this point, we're in, you know, contact with our Public Works Department specifically. They've specifically asked them to meet with us to let us know where they are with the, with improving the plant to treat the nitrogen levels. And that was a question that we discussed and asked at this point. They are, they're not asking that we hold off on, on development approvals as far as maps, you know, tentative maps, final maps. And they're working with, like I said, they're working with NDEP and Washoe County Health. NDEP still has signatory authority on all final maps as well. Those would be imminent connections in the final map stage. And they're still signing final maps, they're still reviewing them, and they're working with the cities to ensure that they have the levels they need.
I believe you answered my question, I just want to make sure I understand it right. So they would then, the NDEP, sorry, would then give an order down to then say, we're no longer approving because of these reasons until we get this under control?
That is correct. NDEP has signatory approval on final maps. If they don't believe that we have the ability to sewer the lots that are part of the final maps, they will not, they will not sign those.
Thank you for answering that.
Commissioners, does anyone have a question for Mr. Boster while he's here? Does anyone want to hear regarding the school situation?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to call Mr. Boster up just so you can give us an update. I'll ask the question on, with the adjusted numbers, the impact or ability for a school district to serve.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Mike Boster with the Washoe County School District. Since we received this information, just received this today on the new unit counts, so I wanted to provide you a quick overview on what we came up with this afternoon. And the numbers we're using are 336 units total, 324 of those as single-family residents and 12 as multifamily. And what that does is, the addition of the multifamily component lowers our projected numbers as we get far fewer students out of multifamily, which in turn changes our student generation factors. So as a result, I just want to run down three schools that this project would be served by. Verdi Elementary, we would be expecting 60 new kids out of the development. Currently, Verdi is at our projected 14, 15 enrollment is 202, capacity of 328. So for this particular, take it in, in just in a snapshot, this development does not overtop Verdi Elementary. Billingshurst, we're expecting 22 new middle school kids. Enrollment right now is about 1,001, capacity is 1,051. So again, there's another one that snapshot, this project does not overtop it. Where we have the issue is at McQueen, and Mr. Turnier earlier said the same thing. We will have the problem at McQueen no matter what, whether you approve this or not. We're expecting 33 new kids out of this development. The projected 14, 15 enrollment is 1,876. We have a base capacity of 1,529. However, we are handling that with 14 mobile classrooms, which are seven mobiles, which gives us a total capacity of 1,879. However, that's being handled by 350 students being in mobile classrooms. It's not a way we'd like to permanently solve the capacity problem. Those mobiles have been there for years. Bluntly, I don't even think we're allowed to have that many mobiles on the property. McQueen remains our main problem further, and hate to come back as a broken record, and I apologize this in advance, but we do not have an identified funding source for new school construction. But we are working with our partners in the 16 other counties in the state, and we're hoping that in the 2015 legislature that will change. We'd also like to build a stronger partnership with the city, with this body, with the city council, Reno Sparks, Washoe. We'd like you to recognize some of the issues we face. And I know that some of you on this board were principals for a day. And Mr. Reno, I think you were, you were on one of those panels. Not sure which school you went to, but.
I was at Billingshurst.
Fantastic, Billingshurst, fantastic. And I'm glad you guys are going out there and doing those sorts of things. And so, so we'd like to partner with you and with city staff, again, I'm repeating myself, with the developer. The developer came to us a year ago, and we've been working back and forth with them, and they've been, they've reduced their unit counts, and we've appreciated that. That does help the numbers. However, we're at a point in this state where our education is not funded fully. It's not. We don't, in fact, the department I work for stopped being funded in 2012. So kind of coasting, apparently they're still paying me here at 10:30 in the evening, but nonetheless, we don't have a funding source going forward for new, new construction. And finally, I just want to add one more thing. During the last residential boom back in '04 through '07, well, maybe a little bit before that, we used to put a condition on final approvals to show up on closing documents for home buyers. And I'm just going to read this to you, it's real quick. And what it is, is a disclosure that's made to the home buyers. And it says, "A disclosure shall be made by the developer to each home buyer on their closing documents that students in this subdivision may be assigned to the nearest schools with available capacity in the event that the zone schools cannot accommodate additional students." And we think that's important to just get that out there, so we're not, we're not stuck. I'm not saying there's going to be a nearby school, Reno High School, or HUG, or any of the others. We just need to have that flexibility to make that disclosure that we're full or approaching being full across the board. So we'd appreciate that help. Not sure this is the right point to put a condition on the approval, I don't know what you're going to do with this, with this thing, or council will do with it, but we really would appreciate that recognition that we need, we would like at least, that that condition be placed on the approval.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Follow-up on that, Mr. Boster?
Commissioner Levis, I have a question. From what you're saying, it sounds like Verdi's okay in the snapshot, but the other schools aren't yet. That's, Verdi's the school that's getting the new schoolroom, so.
Well, and.
That doesn't sound like the best allocation of resources.
Right, it wouldn't be our resource, we have no resources. The developer did offer that, those two classrooms initially, that was a year ago. And backing up to that time, we had a GT program, Gifted and Talented Program, located at Verdi Elementary School, that took up three classrooms. At that point, we did need the space. That program has since moved out, which is reflected in freeing up three classrooms and freeing up some space in that, in that school. Also, the reduction in unit count and product type makes a difference as well. So it wouldn't be our resources at all, because we don't have them. But it is appreciated from the developer, we would just have to, we need to look at McQueen. Putting more modulators, mobiles, anything at McQueen is really not feasible right now. Not just right now, but look at the physical layout of the school. There's not space there. We've got seven mobiles in the parking lot. McQueen is topographically challenged, I guess if you call it that. We can start putting things on football fields. I mean, we can start just putting things on soccer fields, I suppose. But then it overloads cafeterias and computer labs, common areas, sports fields, that sort of thing. So not to just jump on that, Mr. Levis, I'm just saying that that was the, that was the setup for those two classrooms.
Yeah, and I'd forgotten about the change in the gifted and talented transfers, all that.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Boster? Questions for, additional questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Wiskey?
I do have a question, and it's for Ms. Burchard, the leader of the coalition. It's just one question, but it's very important to me. Just one quick question for you.
Sure, Carly Borcher.
Thank you. In your guys' negotiations, was it your understanding of the total dwelling is to be 324 or 336?
My understanding was the 324. He did present it to me the way that you saw it tonight, as in lieu of commercial. It went up to 336. And I just don't know the processes, I'll be completely honest with you. I thought that's how it worked.
So everybody?
That if, if commercial was to go away, and, you know, he's still got the land, it's not like that little section of land he couldn't touch, I would assume that they would be able to expand the residential, and it would include a couple more units. Obviously, I don't know how, how that affects.
So you knew it would increase, you just didn't know by how much, exactly?
Correct. Our agreement as a group sitting down was 324. That's what we walked away from the table at. We had come to the table with 160, which is the previous zoning for the property. They were at 394, I think. I can't remember the exact number, and basically we chose to split it down the middle. Not that that's exactly the middle, but I can't really justify, I think really what it was, was the 490 something, and us coming at the 160. I'm not exactly sure how the number came about, but.
You have answered my question, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Nathan?
If I may, Commissioner Nathan Gilbert, associate planner. That is consistent with the way it went last time. The way, you know, with the handout that you have, it's 324 dwelling units in the single-family designation and in the neighborhood commercial component. If no commercial is to be built, then residential would be allowed on there. That's consistent with the memo and the discussion at the last planning commission. That is consistent. So if we were to notice this with the revised numbers, it would be to allow a maximum, maximum single-family dwelling units of 336. And that's based on, only if the commercial component is not developed with commercial uses, at that point, they have the option to develop it with single-family uses at the same density of 3.1. at the same density of 3.1 dwelling unit per acre. So that's where the 12 units come from. Thank you for the further information.
Commissioner Reno?
Nathan, can you come back up? Talking about those four acres, I, I just want to make sure that if they want to only develop two acres into commercial, the others, you can't put in six units, or can you? I just generally want to understand, you know, if they cut it in half, or they do something different than, you know, it can't be more than four, obviously, but-
I'm not sure I understand the question. So the four, the four units, the four acres of-
The four acres, let's say they only develop one of those acres into neighborhood commercial. Can the remaining three-
They, they had the option to develop with, with whatever remaining density for residential at, at 3.1 dwelling units per acre, right?
Okay. Answer this question, thank you.
If I can jump in really quick while everybody's pondering everything for a moment. As Mr. Kompadik stated earlier, he did send one version of revisions, I believe it was dated August 18th. We received another version on August 27th. And then there was another version a couple weeks after that, and then there were more revisions tonight presented. So if you do choose to move forward, staff would recommend clarifying what you're approving. So I, it's not a very long document, but we would recommend that you go through page by page. I believe Mr. Kompadik has a strike-through version for the record, and to place the pages on the camera, so, and we can take a snapshot of it while it's up there. Just so, I know Carly mentioned that she just wants to make sure that these, that this is what's being approved. We don't know that as staff unless we actually see the document with the strike-through, or even a strike-through with changes representing what was proposed tonight. We have, we have about four versions of this document out there, and we're not comfortable as staff knowing what's going to get approved tonight, if it's going to be approved tonight, unless the applicant can bring that up on the, which I think he can, and go through every change to make sure we have everything on the record. Thank you.
Well, we have some additional work cut out for us, commissioners. So that would make me a little more comfortable, based on the concerns I voiced earlier.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wiskey. Mr. Kompadik? Do you have all the changes available for us with strikes to put on the overhead so that we can have snapshots of the changes?
I believe I-
Or do we need to-
Excuse me.
Postpone this for two weeks until we have our next meeting, and you can then bring it forward with all the changes, so we know what we're voting on?
What I, I want to be supremely confident that I can address 100% of these. And there's a little bit on the spot here. I've got this draft PUD that I said is the PUD that's been in the pipeline for six weeks. But for example, like, it's kind of, I think it's obvious now, I had from 50-room hotel to eight-room hotel, well, we're not going to do an eight-room hotel, so I'd like to insert the language motel instead of hotel. That goes away. That's not in this PUD. So if you can work with me on those, then we can get to all of the changes, but-
Well, I, I think that's what staff just suggested to us, planning commissioners, that if you have the document that is properly struck and properly rewritten, then we would know what we were all agreeing to or disagreeing to, and making recommendations to city council for their approval or denial. And if not, then-
We can go through these, I mean, this is, there were, like I said, a couple answers.
Well, without it, you probably aren't going to go home happy.
Yeah.
I don't know that you're going to go home happy anyways, but without it, I don't think we can make the proper motions.
Right. Could I, could I-
Take a minute, yes.
One minute. No, no, I need one minute.
One minute.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Excuse me.
Does anyone want to fill in with questions for staff or anything in that minute? Let's just take a minute to ponder, shall we? Okay, we're taking a break. Where at was the question that Vice Chair Wiskey asked? Is the applicant prepared? Does it, does a current enough strike-through version exist that we can go through and page by page know what we're deciding on tonight?
That goes, that goes away, yes. Weather condition.
Parks needs to be-
But we can do that at council, if they're comfortable.
First page there are changes, commissioners, this would be page three.
So I guess we're all going to our old copies, but should we even do that? Do we just want to direct our attention up to the screen while we can't read it?
I think that would be confusing to you to have the, because this is the, like I said, that draft that I gave.
But we can't see this. Okay, can you guys see this? Is this the first page?
It's the first page is changes. This is page number three in the document. So you can see the map in there is updated with the one that I showed in the PowerPoint. Correct acreages, those acreages are all correct, updated. Four acres of commercial, the .25 FAR stays the same. So then the maximum yield is reduced proportionately to the four acres. We've talked about all of this. Let's see, in the event of multifamily residential.
Wait, stop one sec. I want to make sure the staff has the version. Do you, do you have his version that you're working off of? So that you're taking-
Nathan has it and is following.
Okay, so you're following? Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Anyway, this is all that we talked about, and then we have in the blue, the last line, "Should multifamily residences, multifamily uses be proposed in commercial subject to approved SUP?" Of course, we talked about that. "The total number of DU shall not exceed 336." Okay? This is red, now this red one is the fir-, this is the round that they saw, right, in red?
That's not new, we're grabbing, that's-
Right, see, that, that's from the old PUD that you probably have in front of you from, that's not new.
Wait, are these changes?
No. Those aren't changes. We went iteration of iteration and put them all in the PUD. That's, the red is-
But you, but this is that PUD that you're, you're showing us now?
Yes.
Has all the iterations in it?
Yes.
Okay. And the red is the one that we originally had?
With the exception of the one that I sent to Nate like a week later because of the two changes I called out, and I have them handwritten in here, or I have one of them handwritten in here.
I guess my question is, the one we've got in front of us, is this going to reflect as the red in the one you're showing us now?
I want to be, do, do they have the red, the one with red in there, tonight?
Yes.
No, that, that's an old version, Nate, right?
Madam Chair, I, I can see this is going to be an agonizing process already. Is this what we want to do here?
It's up to you guys. I made it clear where I'm at, so it's up to you guys.
I mean, do, it, does a PUD with current, a current version exist as it stands with everything in it?
Yes, that's, that is the version that I have. Yes, that's the summary of them. And this, this PUD.
So then-
But I'm trying to explain the red, because that was one iteration earlier, so we have several iterations. You've seen this red before.
Well, what's, I want to see the final, final.
Okay.
That's really what matters here.
Okay, so the red, let, let's just skip through that.
Everything in it. I don't know if anybody else wants to go through all the other iterations that lead up to that.
Okay, let's look at the purple, that's the draft. That's, that's what I was pointing to in, on that first page I showed. Okay, so this is again, I can hardly see the purple now, there's a weird color change there, but that first sentence, can you guys see that? "Should multifamily residential uses be proposed in the commercial?" Same sentence that we had in the past. "The total, the total number of residential units within the PUD shall not exceed 336." And we strike the old language in the red you saw in a prior iteration.
Shouldn't it be 324?
Yes.
Shouldn't it be 324 in that first sentence? "The total number of residential units within the single-family should not exceed 324." But then the second sentence is that-
Okay, we'll strike that and say 324.
But I'm right, am I right? Is that just me? That's the whole thing we've been talking about, right? Where then if the commercial isn't developed, it's-
Actually, the, no, in line four, it would be 336.
Right, and then it would be 330.
Yeah, 336, because that's making the, that's making the change to the multifamily, or to the commercial area.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Kompadik.
Go on. Yeah.
You just told us that you have the most update copy right there that we were looking at, and it's not updated.
Well-
Are you prepared to do this, or can, it's 11 o'clock, can we postpone this for two weeks and move on? Because we still have an agenda tonight.
Okay, let's, uh-
Right. What do you want to do? I mean, I, we've, we're trying to work with you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I think the question is, in two weeks, could staff get an analysis done, and could we, you know what I mean? Where are we going to? Question for staff. Would it be two weeks?
We can get it done in two weeks. We, if you do go that direction, we would ask that we have also direction regarding the school disclosure that was brought up tonight, and the city involvement on park review process. As those, two issues, I believe those are the two outstanding issues that were brought up and not, with no direction on them.
Let's, let's, let's continue. We'll get it cleaned up, get staff to review it, and we'll get on the same sheet, be done with it.
I think that would be in everybody's best interest, honestly.
Yeah.
Let's, let's be clear, though, for staff and for you guys, if we continue this to two weeks, you guys can do the analysis, but that means they need a final, final, which exists, right? In like five days, right? To be able to, or sooner, to do the analysis and then notice it and get it to us in advance of-
Will, like by the end of the day tomorrow?
Yeah, it's, there's not a lot of work, we just need to put some focus into it.
And I think that's doable, by the end of the day tomorrow, if they can get revisions. But like, as I mentioned, we do-
Mr. Kompadik, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to everybody that's here. We're doing our best to get this right, and, and to send something to city council that is right. I don't want my name on something going to city council with wrong numbers in it, okay? So with that, I will make a motion to continue this for two weeks from tonight. That'll be the 15th of October. And, and in that, Mr. Kompadik, you will bring us a full PUD that has been reviewed by staff, including school information that was brought forward tonight, and also park language that will include language from Mr. Mann.
Yes, but I'm going to submit it to staff, right? They will bring it, yes.
Yes, you are going to submit that all to staff tomorrow, so that we can then have it to review it before our 15th meeting.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's seen in my motion.
Commissioner Reno, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, you guys. And I want to thank the public for coming out and taking all this time. We hope you guys can, you know, see the process through also, one more meeting.
Can you just explain to us the process of what is at stake when we do this, continue this, and what is going to happen?
Wait, we can't have you talk unless it's on the record, so I think we'll just have staff, real quick, talk about what the process is, what the next step is for the public that came out.
Sure, we will receive by the end of the day tomorrow from the applicant, a clean version, strike-through version, that reflects these changes, the wording from the school district, and the wording from parks. We will put that on the web page, on our department webpage, so that everybody can see that. So that, staff will do an analysis of that, of those changes. We will bring it back to the meeting on the 15th, where we will continue the public hearing, and planning commission will decide on, at that time. We will not be sending, there's no time to send postcards again, so this is the noticing of that time.
Frattonier, committee, committee development director, and that will be under unfinished business?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your, your steadfast efforts and your time tonight, and to staff also. Okay, next item on the agenda is TXT15-00001, Regional Road Impact Fee. Bill, hi again, thanks.
For, for the record, Bill Gall, Senior Civil Engineer. On August 20th, city council directed the staff to draft modifications to Reno, to municipal code necessary to comply with revisions to the Regional Road Impact Fee program. On September 19th, 2014, Regional Transportation Commission Board approved revisions to the RIF General Administration Manual and the Capital Improvements Plan, you saw earlier this evening, utilized to administer the program and assess fees. Additionally, the RTC Board approved a new interlocal cooperative agreement for the administration of the RIF program. Prior to the RIF changes becoming effective, each participating entity must approve the cooperative agreement, the General Administration Manual, the CIP, and approve amendments to municipal code to address the program changes. The proposed text amendment brings the Reno Municipal Code into conformance with the RIF program changes we discussed earlier. Significant text changes include in this, in section 1814-504, we're eliminating references to the three benefit districts, and replacing them with the two service areas proposed in the new program, with a definition, a new definition for the north service area. In section 1814-505B, we're changing the date of the adopted RIF manual and revising the references to the impact fee schedule, to the new schedules. In section 1814-505C and D, we're revising the wording for the method to increase RIF fees in years of an automatic increase. And here I'd like to bring your attention, as Commissioner Wiskey pointed out, on 505, was it 505C2, by 4.5%, we have in here by 4.5% wherever is less, it should be whichever is less, so we will make that change if, if approved. And then in 1814-505E, we're providing a change in the date the RIF fee is calculated and collected from, the old program was building permit submittal to either a building permit issuance or certificate of occupancy. And those will be based on, each entity can make that determination if they want to collect it at issuance of permit or at occupancy. And then in 1814-506D, changing the references from benefit districts to service areas. With that, staff can make the findings and propose the PC. Planning commission move to recommend the city council approve the text amendments by ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, clarification, just on that part where Commissioner Wiskey pointed out that correction on C2. Can you explain, does that essentially make a cap on the percentage you can increase, or in section B above, does it create an allowance to make improve, make increases, but then if they don't make an increase, it defaults to CPI or 4.5 whatevers?
That's, that's correct. As we discussed earlier, you know, in the program, we have to take a look at the program, the, the capital improvements program, and the capital improvements plan every two to three years, and make adjustments to the, the RIF fees based on that. In years where we're not taking a look at those, or making any additional adjustments to the, the program, it should, there should be an automatic adjustment to, based on the CPI or- every two to three years and make adjustments to the RIF fees based on that. In years where we're not taking a look at those or making any additional adjustments to the program, it should, there should be an automatic adjustment to, based on the CPI, or if the CPI is very high, it would cap out at 4.5%.
Okay, so that cap is only in place if it's that automatic default to CPI?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on this? Mr. Gahl? Minutes discussion? Motion?
Do we have to have disclosures or anything?
Um, I don't...
On a text amendment? I don't know.
Jonathan?
I would do, this is, notices a public hearing, so I'd do both disclosures and the public comment.
Oh, right, I have to do public comment. Sorry. I would like to open it up for public comment. Any members of the public? Okay, I'll close public comment. All right. What, Jonathan, what type of disclosures would it be regarding the same as before, like in regards to RTC?
Yeah, yeah, with, yes.
That's the exact same thing, Commissioner Taylor. I just, RTC is a client, we're not have a project with them. It doesn't impacted it anyway. Thank you.
Any other disclosures? Okay. Thanks. Take a motion?
Madam Chair, I can make a motion. Based upon compliance, in the case number TXT 150001, Regional Road Impact Fee, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council approve the text amendment by ordinance with the adjusted items in section... Let's see if I can get this right. Section 18.14.505 as described by Mr. Gahl. And yes. I don't know if there's findings to be made, so I can make those. Oh, there's only, yeah, there's two of them. And I can make those findings.
Commissioner Taylor, I second.
Hey, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Chucky Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Commissioner Wieske, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and pretty much reviewed things in conformance. And it was a pretty calm meeting. Had a nice presentation by staff on the consensus coming out, so. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Any questions on that? Next item on the agenda, staff announcements.
All I have are city council action on previous planning commission items. You had seen the Boomtown Truck Stop quite a while ago. They, that has changed ownership and they came in for an extension on that. City council was the final decision on that item, so it went directly to city council and didn't come back to planning commission. And they did receive a five-year extension on that. Abandonments do not come to planning commission. However, I know you are aware of the Wright Street abandonment and the Lander Street abandonment. Wright Street was abandoned by city council. They have some time to come back and meet the conditions of that. And that would be followed up with a special use permit application for the school expansion. And at your last workshop, you initiated a, or at the meeting, same night as the workshop, you initiated a master plan amendment to change the boundary between the UNRC and the DRRC. We held the required neighborhood meeting on Monday night and we had a fantastic turnout, standing room only in this room. And lots of great questions and discussion. And it was, it was a very productive and successful meeting on Monday night regarding that topic.
Great. We'll look forward to hearing more about that.
Yes, you'll hear that on the ninth.
Any other updates from staff?
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, next item on the agenda, item number nine, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. I'll lead off the one we discussed earlier, reviewing the number of nightclub and bars in the downtown, whatever that district is, the official name?
DRRC.
The DRRC, as well as a review of existing SUPs, unless that's too much work, but you know what I'm getting at?
Yes.
SUPs that might not be in compliance and issues having to do with, you know, noise and the entertainment district.
And I think with that, we'll bring back the definition of nightclubs, because that sometimes causes some confusion. So we'll bring that as part of that review.
This is a big topic, but I think one that obviously we, there were some, there were some concerns about up with tonight. And so, you know, maybe we have a, if we could have an item on the agenda and let me know what you guys think if I'm saying this, if you're in agreement or this is what you guys were thinking, to sort of review what's in place. But I think a moratorium was mentioned and then, you know, at some point, maybe it's something where there should be a community meeting or we, you know, we talk to some of these folks that live down there and have the businesses.
I think...
Maybe that's too much, I don't know.
With that, maybe we'll bring back the purpose of a moratorium and the purpose of a cap and how they're used differently in different places. I think that, I think those term, two terms are used interchangeably and they really aren't. So I think we'll bring back some clarification for the whole...
As well as the SUP issue. Commissioner Kaufman?
The other, I'd like to see how many complaints they really have on those nightclubs and so forth. I mean, you know, we should see some facts and figures. If they're in fact going to Reno Direct, they should have a report that tells us, hey, how many is? Is it one or two nightclubs that's, you know, given a bad name to everybody? That's what we should find out.
We have that data and we will bring that to you.
Perfect.
Yeah, sounds like a presentation from Alex, a moratorium and a cap, as well as SUPs that might be in violation or places that don't have SUPs interacting as nightclub, something like that. Anything else on that item? Any other suggestions for future agenda items? Yes, Commissioner Lewis?
Not a suggestion, but a comment if we're done with that. I just, kind of a rough night here for everybody and staff.
Hey, we're in public comment, you're in public comment.
Public comment, okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make it under the right item.
A little more positive note, I, as we spoke about the master plan workshop, for me, for a lot of you, that probably, you'd seen it before, but for me, that was very helpful. And just want to thank staff and everybody for that. That was helpful for me to kind of start to pull some other things together. And following on that, we had university. So I appreciate that. A little more positive note to the evening.
Thank you. Any other comments and positive notes? Okay. All right. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.